Elsa. Good evening, welcome to the Town of Cohasset Select Board Meeting Tuesday, March 28th, 2023. We're starting at 6:30 PM. Just a reminder, we will open this meeting. We will then go into an executive session and reconvene at about 7 o'clock. The roll call, starting with Cory.
Craig is here.
Jean.
Jean Hyde, over.
All ready present.
Diane Kennedy here.
Jack Creighton here. Okay, I'm like those who care to join me in the salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, just, this is a hybrid meeting tonight, which means it is on Zoom. However, we are meeting live in person, so some of the Zoom protocols will be not really relevant. We can have regular votes. But people should be aware that they can watch this at Zoom. If you're watching it on Zoom, you just have to raise your hand and we will get an electronic signal and you will be able to address the board and ask questions and we'll be able to respond. You're watching on 143. You can watch this, but you cannot speak and you cannot participate. All votes, well, we will not necessarily need a roll call for the votes because we are hybrid here in person. If you wish to speak, you must provide your full name and your address. The meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143. Okay, we would like to consider going into executive session exemption number six to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the body public. The board will discuss a potential property acquisition. The chair finds the exemption. Chair would do entertain a motion to go into executive session. Second, we have a motion made in second and go into executive session. I think for this we will have a roll call. Cory.
Craig is on.
Jean Hyde.
Paul.
Paul Ray.
Diane.
Jack Creighton, hi. We're now in executive session. Cohasset Select Board Meeting Tuesday, March 28th, 2023. We opened at 6:30. We went through the mutual formalities. We went into executive session. We're out of executive session. What's saying is how we're coming back in at like a roll call, sorry Cory.
Craig is still here.
Jack Creighton here. We are in session. We normally start our meetings with an opportunity for the public to make public comments. Remember that public comments are directed to the board. There will be no discussion about the subject that's brought up in public hearings. The board may or may not choose to handle it on an agenda at a different meeting. Is there anybody who'd like to make a public comment? Anybody on, okay, all right, moving forward. The license permits and events, three beach minimum, kind of a race in September 30th. Is there anybody here to speak to that?
Hi, John. Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Yes, we can. Okay, great, good. Sorry, I lost the last few seconds there. I heard you say three beach minimum and then I think it rejoined me as a panelist, so. Let's see, how should I usually start with naming?
Explain what you're proposing.
Yep, yeah, sure. Well, first of all, thanks, everybody, for the opportunity to.
Yeah, we need your name and address. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, okay, sorry. So, John Donlin, 48, Beach Plum Lane in Situate, Mass. And thanks again for the opportunity to present the application for the race again this year. This is our ninth year of doing the race. It's 10 years altogether. We had to take one year off there for COVID, but really happy to be back. Really, nothing has changed about the race. So, we always shoot for the last Saturday in September. This year, that's going to be September 30th. It's a Saturday. The race will go off from 7:00 to 10:00 AM. We expect about the same number of runners. We cap it at around 400, same as the last few years, so no change there. You may recall, or if you're familiar with the race, it's an out and back course. So, the start and finish area is actually at Nantasket Beach. Runners come out Nantasket Ave. And then take a left at West Corner, come down Jerusalem, Atlantic, around the Cove, out Border Street, and then they do a short turnaround in the Indian Trail neighborhood of Situate, and then kind of retrace their steps. So, and all that, the course is exactly the same as it was the last couple of years. We go heavy on the police details, so we've got seven Cohasset details helping us out at the, at the different intersections. We've got an EMT at the start-finish and also a detail standing by at the fire station as well, in case we have any medical issues. And we always have a healthy group of sponsors. We've got about 12, 13 sponsors, half of which are from Cohasset, which is great. And yeah, we had a great year last year. We're just hoping to bring it back again this year, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Questions from the board?
I just have one question. John, great job in the past. I wonder if the 400 participants is about the same as last year?
Oh, it is, yes. Yeah, yeah, we cap it at about 400. I know, you know, I've worked really closely with Chief Quigley's team in the past and we've, you know, in the past, we've talked about making the race a little bit bigger because it is so popular, but 400 is about a good number where we don't have to close the streets. It's open to traffic and we feel like we can kind of, you know, we, we make a strong push for runners to stay over to the right side of the road so they're not trying to cut the corners on Jerusalem especially. And yeah, it's just, it feels like the right size for the race and we're just kind of rinse and repeat mode.
Thank you, John. Well, I want to hear from public comment. Is there any public comment? Anybody? Go ahead, Paul.
I make a motion to approve the road race.
We have had a motion made in second to approve the three beach road race for September 30th, 2023, made in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, John.
Great, thanks very much.
We, next is a Memorial Day Events Parade, May 27th through 29th, 2023. Do we have anybody to speak to that? Is he coming up? Okay, Phil, thank you for coming. Could you tell us about the parade? And thank you for your service, by the way.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, the Memorial Day Observance is a two-event evolution over that Memorial Day weekend, starting off with Saturday, 27th May at 1 o'clock, which is the Healing Field Dedication. Worked closely with Chief Quigley and Officer Lawrence in the past to make sure that traffic and safety is fine with that. The event goes from 1 o'clock, we're done by 1:30, 1:45, so not a big interruption to traffic down in the harbor area. The parade itself is Monday, 29th May. Couple of different events that day. We leave, veterans leave the Legion area at 8 o'clock. The parade really comes into focus about 10 o'clock at the Music Circus where we march from the Music Circus down through the center of town, arriving in the harbor area around noon. Again, traffic and safety driven by Chief Quigley and his traffic reps to, you know, for the safety down there. It's the same we do every year, but obviously, everything is reviewed and done prior to actually getting out there.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the board? Do we have any comments from the audience?
I make a motion to approve the Memorial Day Parade.
We have a motion made and approved and seconded to approve the Memorial Day Parade. And you mean both parades?
Parade and audience load.
All right, May 27th and 29th. Motion is made in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, extension, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Phil. We really appreciate all the work that you and all the veterans do.
Thank you for all your support.
Yeah, well, very good, yes. Okay, moving on. Request for Turtle Ramp at Wheelwright Park. Are the proponents here? Identify yourselves, David. Last thing, too.
I'm Maya Bishop.
And your addresses.
109 Nichols Road, 274 South.
Okay, Cohasset.
Yes.
Right, okay. Tell us about your turtle.
We have a slideshow.
Okay.
By the way, this is the best thing I've ever had in my package. So excited.
Diane had claimed this is the best thing she's ever had in her package, so.
Just to give a little background to this project, we are seen as at Cohasset High School and this is part of our National Honor Society. And this is a service project that has to be done to be a member. And we started this project in the fall with initial research and then we reached out to local and state experts to get their opinions and went to ConCon, got their approval for it, and now are here to get town's approval.
Do you have names for all the turtles? Anyway, comments from the Select Board?
Wheelright Park all the time, I live right there. And yeah, this actually turtles and skating park area all the time, so cool idea.
Do you want to name?
There's a lot of beautiful historic things that were written. I encourage the whole town to visit that park as much as possible.
Name the turtles.
I would just love them, just for the audience's point of view, if you didn't get the slide presentation earlier, if you could just kind of walk us through exactly what you're doing.
So, it's going to be located in the east-southeast corner of the skating ponds.
Okay. The structural plan, we kind of made two plans that we kind of oscillated between, depending on materials and accessibility to everything. Our original plan was this rock formation where we kind of would just take rocks in the area that would be very natural. And we talked to NHESP. They said that this would be a really good plan that would naturally help the turtles without disturbing it too much. So, that's kind of an image of what we created. And yeah, this is kind of just a bigger description of it. We just use small to medium sized rocks to help us build this. The pond isn't very deep, so we're not expecting it to be too difficult.
Any comment? Isn't something that you'll have to have any machinery for, just small enough rocks? That's just a volunteers?
Well, yeah, we just work on ourselves.
Other comments from the Select Board?
You know, we're wait, sorry.
Yes.
Any comments from the audience? Chair would entertain a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve and thank yous. Great work.
Have a motion made and approved to approve the Turtle Ramp at Wheelwright Park. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to call out one of your advisors, Phil there, who's in our audience. So, thanks for your role in this stuff.
Thank you, Phil. If turtles can stand up and take a bow, you can do that. Just, just.
The great addition to that, that we're revitalizing that pond wall containing water, which is done in 2003, that was some of these project, which is going to be 38. It's a big shake and a turtle ramp.
Thank you. Is there any further comments from the audience? Hearing no further comments, Chair to entertain the motion. We did have that. We've made in second it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, extensions, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We look forward to the grand. We have a request to place anti-littering signs in the town. It's going to be postponed. Just postponed, okay? My next one will be postponed, sir. Okay. Okay, next, we're moving on to special town meeting, special election fall 2023. What we're considering doing is adding a special town meeting above and beyond the regular special town meeting to be held in the early fall. And the reason for that is, we've been following our meetings. We have a number of very, very serious projects that really are getting to the point they can't be ignored. We're doing the town hall, schools, fields, there's conditions about buying other properties that may be available. The fire station and the police station are in such a time in their, in their lifestyle where, or their life frame, where they're probably going to have to be replaced. All of these are major, major issues. And they've kind of been, because they're so complex, they've kind of been put off. And I don't think we can, and I don't think, the board thinks that we can put it off forever. But these are questions that need to be socialized to the whole town. They need to be put together in packages so voters can make intelligent votes. And quite honestly, we have urgency to get it done, but we will not be able to do that in time for town meeting, which is, you know, mere weeks away. So, the idea is that we have a town meeting, a special town meeting only for funding, and then we can hash out, because it's going to be trade-offs. There's going to be spending money in schools, spending money in town hall, policing, fire, how much we, and the schools. So, anyway, that's the purpose of this. And Jean?
Yeah, I would add to that. So, we were really trying hard to get everything ready for this annual town election, but we were getting feedback from both residents and committee members that we just did not have enough time because the warrant has to essentially be finalized by April 4. So, given all the votes that are stacked up, I think we're getting to the point where we're getting a lot of good clarity on the projects and stabilization funds, but there's still additional work to be done that was just up against the timelines. So, we did explore whether we could legally move this spring town meeting by like a month to six weeks and the election, because to the extent that we need, even if we get a successful vote at town meeting, we still need to fund it through the town election and we need that exclusion or stabilization part of the ballot. And the long and short of that is, we cannot, in light of applicable laws. And so, what we would have to do is do a new town meeting and special election and just call it entirely. And we're thinking likely in the fall, which will give us time to do the outreach, not just on the projects, but on the financial impact. And for those people that are on committees and are officials, both in a town capacity, but also on in a committee capacity, in a select board capacity, one thing that we're grappling with is once the select board places it on the ballot that you cannot do, we have advocacy. There's a state law in place that restricts what we can do, and we're drilling down on that with our lords. You can talk about tax impact, but there's some pretty significant limitations in terms of advocacy, once we place it on the ballot, which restricts our ability, in my opinion, to do the outreach as well that we need to do, including in the funding and financing. So, we really need to be completely ready when we put things on the ballot. Ballot deadline for this town meeting, I think, is Chris Kirk, if I'm wrong. It is like April 1st.
Spread around. It's really, I think, the 4th, it'll be next meeting.
Yeah, so we're struggling up against some pretty significant issues where it seems from my perspective, we would be better to have a bigger plan, including doing more public forms, including on the tax impacts of all these projects we're talking about as we.
And I think the, thank you, Jean. That was very, very well spoken. The reality is, it's going to be a lot of money. And we're going to have to go to the town and we're going to have to give options. And the options are going to be seen directly on people's tax bill. So, then the population has to decide how much they're willing to spend, or maybe they'll decide they're not willing to spend anything, but that's a decision to be made by the town. We want to make sure the town is informed of what's going on. We also don't want to see good projects voted down purely because people don't understand it, because they're saying, "Well, I won't vote for this even though it's worthy because I have my other project that I know I'm going to want money from later on." So, that really skews the vote. People will be voting not on the overall package, but I'm going to turn this down because I know I want money for this over here. We're hoping to get the whole community to engage in some very, very difficult discussions. And for those on the boards and committees who've done a lot of work, we are very aware of the work that we're doing, what you have done. And some are here and some are watching. And we want to make sure that all the participants have their work product fully valued. So, are there comments from the other Select Board members, Cory?
Yeah, just to be clear, the public and the board hasn't voted on anything yet.
No.
Just, we're only being creative here. You know, I think one thing that I realize in conversations with the public and with members of the boards is that the special stabilization fund that we really have identified as a really great tool aren't yet understood even by, I think, fully this board and the impacts. And I do know that like, you know, there's, the schools are working on things, there's money in the paving budget. So, I mean, buying ourselves a few months to figure out the numbers there and to really socialize what these projects are, obviously the cost, what they're going to be, I think, you know, has a better chance of success. I want to go to town meeting with everybody understanding and everybody on the same page. And, but I do, I put those in a different bucket. These are new funding mechanisms we've never used before, and we need to figure out how to execute it. But in a separate bucket are the things that we know are ready. And we're going to use traditional, you know, debt exclusion, you know, mechanisms. And that includes town hall, which is ready. And I think if we delay that, and we'll have the town hall building committee here in a second, they can speak to this and confirm this. But if we delay it, we're going to cost ourselves money in, you know, in bidding and all that. We're just going to, it's going to just cost money. It's also going to add to the load of that of that other town meeting. So, I don't think there's any benefit to delaying that. I think we should let the residents vote on it. And if they vote it down, we'll have a better sense for what's going on in the fall. I also don't want to delay fields and courts, especially the courts. I mean, the tennis, the tennis courts are in terrible shape. We funded a court study two years ago because it was a need. That turned into a field study and now we're kind of going, "Well, we're not ready for that." So, the courts, which were the identified priority that we then brought in, are now going to be sacrificed because the broadening, broadening made us not ready for it. So, I don't think we can delay that. There's other parts of the fields that I think we've identified through these processes that need to happen. So, I don't see any reason to delay town hall or the fields and courts, at least the courts, and maybe a few things. We want to scale that down a little bit. But I think those two things are the things that we can, we should move forward for this town meeting. And the other mechanisms, I agree, needs to be pushed back to have success.
Diane?
Yeah, I feel similarly. I, I have to, I have to say something that I don't want to say. But, I mean, this is the same conversation we had in July, that we had projects that were piling up, that we had projects that had gone through the study process over X number of years and were basically in the same place we were last July. And it's super frustrating. I don't want to send something to this town meeting that is going to get voted down because we're not in the business of doing that. We're in, we should be in the business of identifying priorities and needs in the town and bringing them and explaining them and vetting them and getting them over a finish line. And as we keep postponing this, whatever decisions that they are, we just get further and further and deeper, deeper in the hole and more things come up. I mean, we had three emails today alone about the Beechwood Playground that frankly, went off my radar because I thought we were addressing that earlier in the year. And then we're, but here we are, we're a week away from closing a warrant. And our advisory committees and our capital budget committee have not fully dug into their job where they can stand up to town meeting and say that, you know, for the following reasons, we need to put these forward. So, I'm really frustrated. I wish there were an earlier time that we could move some of these conversations forward. You know, I've been thinking about this the last couple of days, just in terms of, you know, we have, town hall is a shovel-ready project that we've been debating for years, that we have done every analysis upside down. It's ready to go and there's one funding mechanism. It's the way it is. I mean, frankly, three years ago, when we charged, we charged the committee, it was to try to find a way to put it into the operating budget. And we got to a point where we didn't realize that was not possible. So, but at the same time, putting it in front of the voters at this town meeting is going to jeopardize it because we have the, our advisory committee and our capital budget committee, who could be having, they don't have a warrant article. We have this conversation last week, Jeff, on the phone, where, you know, like, you know, you need a piece of paper, you know, move to ask the town to raise appropriate. And we're not there on any of this stuff. I totally agree with the courts. Same thing, the courts, we've been through this over and over again. There were three different study committees with all different people in town. We went, we got funding for a study. We went, and I believe we got some money to start addressing them, whether it was rebuilding them or not. And, you know, I hate to see that way because if we don't make a decision on the courts until the fall, guess what? It was a whole nother season. They're not going to get done until 2025 for high school varsity sports. And that's just, it's shameful, frankly. So, I don't, I don't have emotion. And I don't know what to say other than I'm supremely frustrated right now.
Other comments? Paul?
You know, I can agree with Diane about the frustration because it's, you know, a lot of roll calls and reading those Beechwood emails today. I'm very put off. I know there's reasoning that we didn't do it. Didn't think that was a hard stretch to get it done and get it done right. We do have a lot of, I mean, I think Beechwood should have got done. There's reason behind that, but it didn't. And I also agree with the fields and courts. People are using those. That'd be something I think we must be put up. But other than that, town hall. Whether or not, I just think that the town is fully aware of what they have seen, what they haven't seen, the options that could be available to them. But I do agree that I think the people in this town need to see some action. Some way, manner, form, be it the tennis court, which is something that makes the field that they're going to have to take a big bite out of the apple. I think that's embedded and explained to them clearly, succinctly, it's positive. And projects that have been held up for so many years. It's not easy to say, but again, we've reached an inflection point. We've got to get it done. I think the town should be ready for it. I agree with that 100%. I wish we could kick that.
Yeah.
That we need business.
Cory, I was also, I mean, I'm sure a lot of us watched the advisory meeting. I mean, advisory, like, I don't want to speak, but the sense in many members spoke of town hall being like, you know, we want to see it, want to vote on it, we're ready to vote on it. One member pointed out that this is something that's been kicked down the road. And I think to both of your points, every time it gets snowballed, right? In the fall, there's going to be more and there's going to be more. I think that's why we're here, right? It's why we're, we're being buried under all of these needs is because we keep doing that. So, let's take the things that are ready. Let's put them out there. You know, again, I empathize. You know, again, I, I, I empathize very much with the town hall, it's gonna be a hard conversation. I don't know if it gets any easier ever, right? I don't know if there's, you know, there's a kumbaya moment for years from now, where I go, okay, great. I, I think this is something the town has to decide whether, I mean, this is, uh, again, I'm gonna be rude here, but this is an albatross of a building, like, is this historic building, does this matter to us? And we just have to make that call. If it doesn't matter to us, we can move on. If it does matter to us, we gotta do something about it. Kicking it down the road doesn't improve the chances of this building being any better conditioned. We're not gonna get, we're not gonna find twenty million dollars in gold. I just, right now, we have a project that's ready, it's the most ready it's ever been, it's been thought about, let's, let's put it to the people, and let's, let's get an answer. I just don't see us, if we push it off, I think the outcome could be worse in both directions.
Um, I think if the majority of the board wants to move forward on these warrant articles, then um, I, I would be strongly opposed to not doing the school stabilization fund. I think that for all those reasons, Corey, that you just said, we can't leave the schools out. We can't leave the schools out of that, what would otherwise be a package of projects. Particularly where we know the schools have forty million dollars of work they're facing down based on the AI three study, that town, the town meeting commission for us to figure out what the repairs are. And we don't even need to decide what the specific repairs are, but I think to start creating the fund imparts a signal to the voters that you're gonna have to spend money on these schools as well, and it's gonna be at a cost that is equal, if not exceeding to, for example, the borrowing article of the town hall in terms of the yearly impact. That is very important.
So what you're saying is, if we're gonna do the town hall, do the school.
I think it's gonna be all or nothing. I think you can't leave people out of the conversation, um, including to create the mechanism for the funding, because what I don't wanna do is move forward on, let's say, fields and courts and town hall, and people think this is it, this is your tax impact, and then we come back three months later for a special stabilization fund for the schools and roads and sidewalks.
Yeah, Paul?
That's what I was getting at. I mean, again, as we talked about, it is a logic. I agree with you, is that I think that the town should be presented, and I'm sorry. Against schools, I don't think that we should cherry pick. I do have to agree with that, is that, you know, say, say town hall, or fields and sidewalk, I feel some sorry, which I'd love to see it done. But I think if the townsman have to take a bite out of the apple, they've gotta realize how big a bite they're gonna take.
Uh, Jane and Diane?
But I, I want everyone to realize that if it's on the ballot, that means no more advocacy from any town official, committee, employee. That's what state law is, there's very limited, there's limited opportunities, and we'll, we'll have to abide by that, and so if we wanted that extra time, the role of tax impact, financial impact, a lot of that conversation that people are gonna have, and why, advocate why we think these things are necessary. Um, in light of that impact, we're hamstringing, hamstringing ourselves by having it hit to the bell, right now at this juncture.
Diane?
Not, i- in a very similar vein, is, it, it's less about the advocacy, and it's, it's more about the information. And again, we're a week away from closing a warrant, and we have not had other than town hall, we have not had any of these fully formed conversations about a dollar amount. What is delineated within that dollar amount in front of our capital budget advisory committee meetings? And if we go to town hall, and I'm just talking politically right now, we go to, if we go to town meeting, and our advisory committees are like, we don't even know what this is, we don't even know what is in this ask. Again, I, I'm gonna always separate town halls, we've been at that, they've seen those numbers. But that's what's gonna happen, and, and the voters are gonna be, we're not giving them the information, we're not doing our job. This, this conversation we're having right this second, but we should have happened in January. Um, alas, I mean, last week, we, we had the, um, Craig McClellan here, talking about the incredible capital needs that the schools, um, have, and wanna start addressing immediately, and probably should. At the same time, they were asking for a feasibility study of four million and a half dollars without any detailed specifics on that, and then, you know, a few days later, just out on the street and all the conversations we have, that number's now four seventy-five. That does not engender any confidence in anybody about what these numbers are. And we're being really disingenuous to ourselves and to the community to try to, um, you know, try to put things in front of them that aren't ready.
Uh, Paul, but before that, I, our financial director is here, and what would we, everybody needs to understand is all these major projects are gonna require overrides of debt exclusions, so we're borrowing money. What would be helpful for us to know is the approximate cost per million of dollars, so we, as it goes to the tax bill. So when people say this, of X amount of dollars, this is gonna be X amount of dollars on your tax. So do you have that figures?
Yeah, um, I just wanna point to, um, this question that I passed out a few weeks ago, the giving the tax impact. What it, what it is right now with the debt exclusion, what it is for a million dollars, a million five on the median housing house. So I, I have to screen it up as a guideline, so I'm gonna be happy for several projects, but I do wanna mention that, um, a debt exclusion and an override, a debt exclusion is not gonna hit your tax rate right away. So these things can be tiered, an override will hit your tax rate right away. So it, it all comes down to the graph that I presented you on, and it's showing, you know, our existing debt, and how that drops off, and how you can incorporate your debt. And then if you wanna incorporate overrides as well. So I, I, I did, um,
I know you did, and I, and I, but that's what I was referring to. Roughly the, the cost per million, and I see Paul and then Corey. Um, and people in the audience, we, we're gonna wanna hear from you in just a second.
So do you want me to tell you the cost per million?
Yeah.
Okay, that will be, on a median house, it's twenty-six cents on your tax rate. So on a median house value of nine hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred, the tax impact is two hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents.
A year.
A year.
And sorry, just contextualize that number. We're talking debt exclusion of what amount, or we're talking one million of, this is why.
Follow you.
Yes.
So. A debt exclusion, if you did a fourteen million dollar debt exclusion, that's over thirty years, that's principal and interest. So if you look at this right here, if you're gonna raise a million dollars in one year, that's two hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents on your tax rate. If you're gonna do a debt exclusion for twenty-one million, right? So these are the project amounts at the top. That's really for projects, taking that amount and spreading it over thirty years. So that's really how this graph goes.
Corey, we have to follow on that, Corey.
You know, I personally think, just when we discussed this last week, that this is better served since the time. Like, the package is already possible.
Yeah. I'm just trying to get.
So I'm going at it, it's, you know, I have a question for the vice chair. If we were to move a special town meeting, how far down the road would we do a special town meeting?
We could do it at any point, and I would suggest we don't wanna do it in July and August, 'cause that's a hard time with people, and so we do it as soon as we can in September, and I think at that point, in, you know, October, actually, because one thing that we could take advantage of is free cash. Um, we could try to use free cash to defray the tax burden on some of, you know, our residents, to try to lower the cost of these projects. You know, it's not gonna be a panacea, but it might help out with some of them, and so that would be a reason I would suggest, you know, maybe in mid-October, to try to move this forward. But we went through all of these numbers for all of the big infrastructure projects last week. In terms of, for example, if we did one point five million in stabilization funding for the schools and roads and sidewalks, that's four, that's essentially four hundred dollars, um, in terms of an immediate increase uh, with town hall, I believe that, and again, we were, just so everyone remembers, we've been waiting to see what's the number that CPC approved, so then we can back into what's the debt exclusion number, until we had that number, we didn't know what the other number was. And so Jennifer, I think we were looking at, what, twenty million? Um, 'cause CPC said one million, which is multiple million less than what had been previously discussed at CPC, which was always four million. And so then that changes the calculation to the taxpayer, right? And so if we're looking at twenty million for town hall, I believe that was around, correct me if I'm wrong, based on the chart, but.
Oh, four hundred, I would, you know, it's twenty-one million, spreading it out, I'd say, you know, four hundred a year.
So it's four hundred for the stabilization funds, four hundred for town hall, and then, uh, fields and side, uh, wrote, um, the fields and rec, let's say that's three point four million in a debt exclusion, which is gonna be about one-seventh of town hall, right? Or a little, little less, so one-seventh of four hundred is gonna land you around, I think it was sixty-ish dollars, who are hovering around for that debt exclusion. So it's around eights, somewhere in the mid-eights, right? If we did the two stabilization funds that combined up to one point five million, if we wanted to do more in terms of roads and sidewalks, like do a million for that and one point five million, then now we're really getting up to a thousand dollars, which would be a ten percent tax increase on the average household level asset in one town meeting, we would be asking.
So that's where I was going with, so in the interim period of time, just, thank you. Maybe I can put together a package, if we did move this down the road to a special town meeting, could we put together a package? Maybe with a proposed or ethical timeline, starting these projects, and get this presented to the town. So for them to accept, for them to look at, digest, and, you know, get it out there to Justin's good offices. And, uh, you know, a clear, succinct presentation, could we do that?
Well, that's a whole, whole region, because I think that's the type of information the town needs to have to know the actual impact. Um, and, you know, this town hall committee is the only one, congratulations, that has, has, really has a finished, you know, product. This is a very difficult thing to do, but this is the, what we are, this exercise we're going through now, is the exercise that would be going on for all these ta- major town things between now and as early as we can do it, which would be in, um, right after people come back from summer, and Corey?
Yeah, I mean, I cherry pick, I don't think is the right word, because we have stuff that's ready, that we can do, the mechanism is known, we have projections. And we have stuff that we still have questions about, including, again, we understand this here, right? But the rest of the town doesn't understand how the special stabilization fund works, and there's still stuff in the pipeline that already has funding for it. There's already stuff happening with schools and roads, and again, my goal here is to get things done properly, to get them done. And I think the special stabilization funds need to be more directed, more focused. We have to socialize them better, that'd be better understood. And I don't think we should hold hostage projects that are ready for that conversation, and I just, I think that's irresponsible. So, eh, and I don't think that there's anything that prevents us from sharing information. I agree about the advocacy. We advocate for progress, put it our vote. That's how we do it, and in public meetings. The town obviously can't go out and say, you should vote for this, we're not. But even if we vote to put something out, there's nothing that prevents us from giving information like this chart to the public. We can still share, it's not like we have a gag order on information. We can't advocate, but we can still share data.
In fact, that's our obligation.
Correct.
Is to present the information in a timely manner to everybody.
Well, Paul? And then I really wanna ask if anybody.
I really wanna circle back, so if you can answer my question. Can we put a package together to present to town? I get it, it's
That's the whole.
It's a yes or a no.
Yes, we, but we cannot get the complete package by this coming town meeting, but we can.
We're gonna move a town meeting to a special town meeting.
We can do that.
But we can present something to the town.
Yes.
They're finally ready to see that this board is about, wants to do something, get something rolling. And they have a timeline, you know, doesn't have to be exact of when and how we wanna start the process.
Yes, we would have enough time to do that. If that's, that's the whole idea, to do it right, we can piecemeal it together. But of course, the dynamic we always wanna remember is, you know, if you takes up your taxes here, here, and here, the project that isn't quite ready by the time they're ready, nobody's gonna wanna spend any more money, so they, you know, but anyway, I see people in, in, uh, being very patient in the audience, so like, any comments from the audience? Jennifer, thank you very much. Audience, comments? Oh yeah, no, this is, this is part of the discussion. The, if what we're discussing is, is, is Mr. Chairman? This is the, um, I'm gonna answer this question. What we're discussing, do you wanna add to this, or do you wanna talk about the town hall committee later on? Bill, it's up to you. What's the board wanting to do?
Might I suggest if we go through these, and then we still have to vote to put them on or not, you know, let's, we just let the votes determine whether or not they go on the town hall, after we hear the information or presentations.
Well, we could do that, yes, but I'm just wondering, on this particular you know, issue, how do we wanna do this? Do we wanna?
The agenda item right now is whether we wanna do a special town meeting and election, 'cause if we call special election, that's gonna be, we wanna make sure our town staff is, is prepared on that, because we'll have to account for that.
Yes.
Um, right, including funding laws. So that's gonna be an important threshold decision. And if we do a special town meeting, and the question is, what do we at least start to do it on, based on what we know today? Right, that, for example, if no one wants to do any of the infrastructure projects, then we don't need to make it, uh, at a special town meeting, to follow up, and then I think we have our answer, and we'll just have to, you know, see how much we can jam through in the early May meeting. But I, I think that's sort of where we're.
We wanna hear from what they're saying before we go on this.
Well, if we're not gonna vote, so would it be, would we make a motion if we would, if we would vote, see if we could win?
There's multiple votes. One is to create a special town meeting, and then the other one is which goes where. I think we're, we all, we're all in support of the special. I think what goes where is, is kinda where we're.
Do we, what I'm saying is, do we, before we vote on this, do we wanna hear from the information on these four town hall roads and uh, roads and sidewalks, fields and courts, and school facilities? Should we hear what they have to say before we vote on putting it off?
I just wanna say something about a special town meeting in, in the fall, which I am in favor of, comprised of some items, whatever we might decide in, in our discussions. Um, just knowing the rhythm of the work pace and the summer, I mean, what I fear is we're gonna be in the same place in September, and we're trying to close a warrant, which has to be done earlier for a special than we are right now. Um, in other words, as soon as we're complete with, with annual town meeting, which we have a statutory obligation to do that and pass a budget the next fiscal year, and we can hopefully get other stuff accomplished. But, you know, we have a relatively small staff, you're gonna lose two members of this board, who arguably work hard, and you're gonna be onboarding two new members. And, you know, you're, you're gonna have to keep this pace up that we've had over the last six, eight weeks, and have your advisory committees, and have your capital budget committee, 'cause I'm sorry, I believe in the committee structure, and I think that's where we failed mostly in this case, and they're gonna have to work, you know, almost breakneck speed, so that all, this package that we're talking about is ready to roll in, in September, so we can close that warrant, and we can have something in early October. And again, with respect to some of these items, it's gonna be pushing, it's gonna be pushing the work, whatever it may be, and in the case of, of tennis courts, I'm just gonna be. It's going to be pushing the work, whatever it may be, and in the case of tennis courts, I'm just going to use that as a subset. They're not going to be ready. In April. Because they're not going to be able to start the work until the frost, and then it's going to be a season, and then they're going to have to wait, and then. Now we're nine years beyond when we identified the need, came up with a plan, and started trying to find a way to fund it. So. But I am in favor of the special.
Okay, I would say that it might be a good idea to hear people who are here for the projects. So. Okay. We have 10 minutes.
She has to get off at eight, or get home, what's the limitation?
She gets on 8:50.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I think on the, she'll be available. I think what we're going to do, we need to move this along. We're going to take what we can with the understanding that Judge Cutler on the bylaw has a limited thing, and I don't think she's going to go very long, because I think there's only one or two issues. That are outstanding. So when she's done, we'll come back, if that makes sense. Because I don't want to have these people waiting here forever, you've already been very, very patient. Yeah, the town hall, let's do town hall, Phil.
Sorry, can you hear from here?
It's easier to come up here to the mic.
We have the town hall building committee, I think we're going to do it all, just be at the forums, so. Say your full name, and then you're here, when I say your first name, Brett.
Eric Lubitz, Eric.
Mark.
Mark, Dan, Dan, Wayne.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Most of the bar building committee here tonight. I think there are a couple of people that want to say something, I. I feel reminded that we have. It has taken 15 years to get to the point that we're at now. In the most recent study, we're up to 1.2 million dollars in expenditures to get to this point. Any delay? Obviously, cost, cost more. Long time, but starting the project, whether. It's going to end up on the dollar side as well, so. A lot of people want to speak on this too, and I'll let them. Mark and Brett, I think, want to say something.
We did quote our point together. So, uh, this was the charge from three or four years ago. Out of the five objectives we've met, four of them, the one that we didn't meet was funding. Funding the project from within a net neutral taxing pack on the town. We, we've had a committee here, started at eight, now down to seven. Working on this for the last three years. We've. Been reporting out, we've stopped and started several times along the way. Next slide, please. This is the updated financial portion, 22 million for the project. Same, same as the information I was before. This takes into account the, the 1 million from CPC. The appropriations to date, bringing the new net total ask to 19.6 million. Again, the town hall building committee humanities recommends. To renovate and rebuild the town hall. These are the bullet point items of the features that will be. Accomplished in the project. This project is. Ready to go, it has 95% drawings that are being finalized now. It's out to bid. We are, we are, we as a town are spending money at this given moment, sending it out to bid. Pushing this out for several months, well, those bids will no longer be valid, valid. We'll have to do it all over again and spend the money to obtain the bids all over again. And the current number will be obsolete. And more than likely will go up.
Mark, how long does the bid last for?
The bid lasts for 30 to 60 days. And that was time, and again, in one of our earlier presentations. The reason that we don't have the number, we don't have that final number here now in front of us today. Is so that that number is right and fresh and ready. For town meeting, so that we can get through the timeframe between town meeting and the ballot. It was a strategic reason why we don't have that here today. And we have that most updated costs, we, that cost estimate that we received several weeks ago. No, whatever, right, you guys are in control.
So Mark, so the number that, this is, we have one more round of numbers to go, but the number that you, if we have it ready for any time, it would be the same number at town meeting and the ballot, that's why it's spaced as it is.
That's correct.
I, I had a conversation with somebody the other day, who's talking about market timing. Because their, their best guess is that. This is not a great time, and I know you're in this business. So you know. This is maybe not the optimal time to purchase goods and or, or, or labor. And what I said to him, asking if this was correct, what I said was, you know. The, the quotes we're getting is the max. So if a bid were to come in less than that, we will pay less than that. Also, we don't necessarily have to bid everything immediately. And sign contracts, is that right? So like, let's say the first thing you do is the engineering. We can do that. You know, assuming this were to pass, and we would get the one appropriated, we could, we could start some of these. These things, and maybe hold off on buying all the lumber, knowing that there might, it might come down. Is there flexibility in the window?
We would be buying, we would be buying the contract with the construction manager. They, it would be up to, it would be up to them and their responsibility and their liability, the order in which they then buy out the actual project. If they let, too much time will pass, and one trade happens to creep up. That's on them. If they think that there's an opportunity for it to come down. And they want to hold off on buying a trade, they can do that.
They're doing the hedging.
They're doing the hedging, we are not doing the hedging right at the time.
If they hold off. Who saves the money?
We do.
Okay.
Any money, any, any cost savings comes back to us, it is not a split shared savings, all the costs comes back to the town.
Is there some sense of, when a CM, we have this number, and it's the max number? Is there an average about, you know? Is it always that, I mean, I think when you're traditionally building, bidding a project out, it's pretty much understood that it's going to come in over, but, right, that's just classic government. This project seems to be completely isolated from that potential, but should we expect to pay every dime of that? Should we expect to pay? You know, a couple thousand dollars less? I mean, is there?
You should go into it expecting that's what you're going to pay, because then you, you, you.
You're only happy, yeah, okay. Yeah, of course.
It's. Like anticipating the weather, you just, you don't know.
Play for the worst.
The worst, sorry.
And. You know, in this particular economy, we've seen a couple of bank troubles, right? This is a public job with public funds. And so the stability of this project, once it is approved and is going, has an attractiveness to subcontractors. Because they know that the job won't be stopped. Whereas the private entity. Can, they can pour foundation and stop at any time. This, we know this will continue. And that, in this particular market, where there are some economic. Volatility concerns. This, this, this job has some attractiveness to the subcontractor market. Also, we know that labor never goes down. So labor won't go down, even if the commodities that they're putting together do come down slightly. The labor will not come down. Prevail, prevailing wage.
May I ask? So, I'm sure you've all said this in your meetings, but setting aside those unanimous recommendation. I mean, would it, would you be comfortable as committee members telling us in this context, just short brief, why you think this is the right path forward? The vote stands for itself, and you've all had comments in the meetings, but for the record of this meeting. Oh, sorry, I just, I'd like to hear just like. You know, one sentence for last, you know, why this is your recommendation? I'm looking for, you know, the.
We've been over and home, and again, we wouldn't still be sitting here, as of May 1st, there'd be three and a half years that this committee's been sitting together, working on this. I don't think we'd still be here shooting in this direction if we didn't believe that this was worthwhile and the current project could have. Again, part of our process was to go through the, walk through the town hall again in the offices. And doing that recently reminds you all, second. You know, it's a shame when we have our employees working in action, the offices are just in no shape. Me personally, I feel like they deserve a lot better space than us. You know, there's a real purpose for having a meeting here in this room time. As we have before. Peeling paint, and extension cords are running out to the back rooms, so that we can get lights in here, it's just. It's too bad that this venue can't be brought to a point where it could be used for, you know, so many functions. But it's just not, it's not, it's not a viable thing, but they're just. Yeah, it's disappointing to see it go this long, and I said it. Mentioned before, it's taken us 15 years to get to this point. I don't think putting it off. Helps anybody? And that's what's happened, what, four different times now, trying to put this project back. Spent a lot of money on, one of the worst things I did was go around and talk to people before I got on this board. One of those persons was bothering in the building inspector. Showed me a shelf full of studies that have been done on the town hall. Said, well, I don't want to get into this, if it's not going to come to fruition, really is something you have to believe in and feel. That it's going to be accomplished. It was disappointing seeing how much money had been spent on it, and it is to this point. Ready, we're ready to go, we're finally at the point. Where you hear shovel ready, we are shovel ready. And I just, I don't see, you know, we talked about all these other projects that you're going to be responsible for, those are four or five years down the road, at least. You're not going to have any studies ready, I don't think, in the fall, I don't know how that affects your decision making. Like to see it get done, like, like to be proud of the building that sits on the classic common.
Thank you, Phil. Tracy, is the judge here? In, in a little bit. You can tell her if you have. She's there, okay. Paul, do you have a brief comment?
No, my comments were longer than that, so. The judge also told Ken, I checked, he said he had a question, he was on the Q and A.
Is it on zoning? Any other comments on town hall?
Paul, here, sorry, I have a question. Is there any contingencies, so been like that 2%, 5%, 10% for that number? And is there, did you go to change orders, or they all?
There, there's a, there's contingent, there's, there's contingencies in there, with the construction, related to the direct construction cost. There's also a separate set of contingencies in there for soft costs. There is not additional money in there, if someone wants to add another floor to. Town or upgrade. An issue beyond where we design, and it's not enough.
Okay, I'm going to pause this portion of that because out of deference to Judge Judith Cutler, who's providing legal services on our zoning. So we're going to hear from Judge, you know, Cutler, you know, now, and then we will. Continue the rest of this discussion, I, I apologize greatly for. We're obviously trying to get a lot of things done in a very short period of time. Judge Cutler?
I think Tom is here, I don't know if he's participating by Zoom, but I think he was going to sign in.
Okay, Tom?
Here he is.
Tom, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, where we are is, we, we have a number of things that we're in the middle of doing, but we, we took a break from them to insert you. Out of deference to Judge Cutler. On the zoning bylaw, you had some additional. Questions? Or brief questions about that you wanted Judge Cutler to weigh in on?
No, I, I. Thought we were presenting all of the articles to you through your votes and recommendations.
Are there articles that you need Judge Cutler to weigh in on?
Depending on your questions, yes.
What might they be?
I don't know, I don't know what your questions are. I mean, the ju, the judges, the judges helpful in explaining some of the reasoning behind why some of the changes are being proposed.
Why don't we move through? Please, we only have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Did everybody get the summary, I think Amber sent the summary of the changes?
Yes. I'm, I'm, I, I agree with all of them, but I don't. Are there members of the board who have questions on these zoning bylaw changes?
Why don't we go through one, I would start with one, and we'll flip through.
Okay.
See if people have questions, if Tom wants to provide just a two sentence summary included for the public.
Zoning bylaw amendment, article two, Tom?
Article two, or, let me, let me start to be, one and 13 are being merged, there's simple housekeeping changes, the main substantive change is to add three purposes of the bot. To the purpose for the zoning bylaw. Dealing with modern times of climate change, the environment, the fact that we have a master plan. That's pretty much article one and 13 in a nutshell, the, the two articles will be combined, 13 will disappear as a standalone.
Is the board comfortable with that?
Hey Tom, were there any issues that arose during the planning board and zoning board bylaws that changed what we originally saw, I want to say two, three weeks ago? I don't think there are, I just want to confirm.
No, I think just one of the new purposes about diverse housing, originally the word was diverse housing opportunities, and it got changed to options, it was nothing, nothing major.
Has advisory voted on these, Chris?
Advisory, yeah, advisory, advisory is eight to zero. Planning, six to zero, the zoning board as of tonight was five, zero, and one abstention.
Or do you, or remember, did you see things in here that you're concerned about?
I'm having a really hard time shifting gears here, just, I mean, I, I know, so, I mean, I'm. I don't love the idea of going just along with, with the advisory and the other boards, they're the experts in this, that's what I would default to do, but i, if I vote on this now, it's not going to be. Which I guess I'm okay with, but. I'm not going to be able to ask proper questions.
In a perfect, in a perfect world, we'd like to have everybody's recommendations and writing in the board.
Okay, go on, continue with the zoning regulations, Tom. The amendment by law.
You want to do a vote as you go along, or wait till we have?
If people on the board have objections. Bring them now, otherwise we'll continue on until we have a question, then we'll. Vote on that, is that okay? Okay, Tom?
All right, the next one is, I guess, become article 19. All right, the next one is, I guess, become article 19. Let me see. All right, this is, this is regarding the change in the definition of height. What we've done with the definition of pre-construction grade is create more data points from which the bottom measurement is done that is currently practiced. And with respect to the top point, we are taking the philosophy that all styles of roofs, the top is the top. And so the changes that no longer will peak roofs be measured to the midpoint, they'll be measured to the peak.
That's article nineteen?
That's article nineteen.
Everybody have any questions about that? Article twenty.
Article twenty is just a housekeeping, housekeeping of the existing article regarding our zoning districts and map. We have just clarified what the districts are, we have eliminated a overlay district that wasn't actually an overlay district. The cluster development bylaw was listed as an overlay district, it is not. They're cleaning that up, we are referencing four different components that currently make up our town zoning map. The map itself has not been updated in some time, but it will, we would hope to get that done after the fall town meeting articles. Since there may be substantive changes to this article, depending if we consolidate districts or rename districts. But right now, this is just housekeeping, and it, it just rewords and reorganizes what we currently have. And makes a change to how we deal with unique property, a small change to how we deal with a unique property that's cut by a zoning district. That one, one lot that is in two zoning districts, I don't know that there's that many that actually exist, but.
Tom, we have a question.
Yeah.
Tom, I have a question for you, have you taken into account the village business district now that we have the railroad tracks? Are there any adjustments on that side to push it back into the village?
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you, Paul, sorry.
Village Business District, have you taken into account any changes in regards to the railroad tracks? I mean, the ship may have already sailed, but that's a.
Well, in the, in the two and a half years, no, in the two and a half years, the working group and this committee, no one has discussed changing the boundaries of the district.
Well, it was changed some years back for a special purpose, so there's no way of.
I'm sorry, say that again.
No way of realigning that, I mean, no one's taking into account those railroad tracks, so even on the opposite side, we're mostly single family homes except for one big project.
When that, when that district was created 15 years ago, 16 years ago now. It followed the old boundaries of the, the pre-existing downtown business district. So the, the boundary lines weren't changed there, it went on both sides of the tracks. And the boundary lines for the moment, nobody has discussed changing them now.
In other words, no, so the tracks haven't been taken into account?
No. But I believe we allow all residential options on the hillside side of the tracks. Yeah, the sign regulation, article six, again, most of it is just cleanup and reorganization. Of, of, the substance is the same, of the weeks to definitions, the most significant one is to make sure the definitions of political and non-commercial signs are, are in full compliance with First Amendment requirements. And, and we also added a height limit to a freestanding commercial sign, which up until now, we do, we do not have, so. That's further down.
And also.
And then Diane.
You know, the judge had something she wanted to.
Oh, it also exempts the, the town signs from the operation of the bylaws, so. Any signs that are put up and maintained by the town or the Commonwealth or the federal government on any land or building or structures that those entities use are exempt, are expressly exempt from this article.
What caught my eye just was the, in section, it's D and E regarding digital, digital signs and filter. I mean, we've got a variety of signs on 3A, I'm thinking of Curtis Liquors in particular, that has a, you know, an electronic sign, which to this would be prohibited. Tom, is this just language carryover, or is that sign?
Yes. Anyway? Yes, we, we, we have, we haven't permitted anything that we've not permitted in the, up to this point, and we've not non-permitted something that we have permitted.
Okay, so there's no substantive change, you just have some non.
No, no, but fin- finally a height limit on stand, freestanding signs.
Next, Tom.
Only because this has been my thing for 12 years of signs. So I have to, I have to pass some fun on my, my leaning days here, but I, I was curious on the temporary signs. It being stating that a sign intended to be exhibited for no more than 60 days during any 12-month period. Anybody that's ever run for election in town knows that, God help you, if you put your signs up more than two weeks before. And then people calculate the election in 14 days, and it's a Sunday, and you get it up as early in the morning as they can. And then if it's not down the next day by noon, you have, you know, people calling and screaming at you. So my question is, according to this bylaw, these kinds of temporary signs could be displayed for up to 60 days. And is there anything precluding the board or ZBA or anybody from kind of enacting some kind of a policy? Based on sort of the historical practice in town, or with this bylaw definition and description.
That's an unwritten rule.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
I, I think the answer, Tom can answer that, but I think.
I'll let, I'll let the judge feel that one.
I'm not sure what, you want it longer or shorter, or I wasn't quite.
Shorter, the practice in town has always been, it's for political signs, that there's, there's a two-week window, and, and again, it's an unwritten rule. But it's strictly by shaming, so I'm just wondering.
Because under, under, under federal, under the US Constitution, we have certain limits on what, what we can do about political and other non-commercial free speech signs, and in particular, political signs, temporary political signs have to be treated no more strictly than other temporary signs, and your other temporary signs require a permit, and they're 30 days at a time. And no more, you know, one extension usually for, for one permit. We have freed up political signs, so they don't require a permit, but they do have the overall 60-day limit. And, you know, I think that's just so that we don't get in trouble limiting free speech, we, we just don't want to make it stricter in the bylaw. I mean, you may, you may encourage people not to keep them up too long, but unless, if, if we shorten the time for other temporary signs. We would probably be able to shorten the time for this, but then you run into for-sale signs or other signs of that nature.
I, I think, I think we're, we're set.
Yep, you've answered my question.
I've got a question more for the judge, judge, can we bounce back to article three for a moment? Again, the railroad tracks, rated between 2006, 2007. Is there any way of re-adjusting that and taking that into account? I'm uncomfortable with that. We have the village on the left, but we've allowed to go over those where the railroad tracks are now.
Paul, we, we've historically allowed that.
I'm just asking you, so where are we aligning it?
Okay, there were no proposed changes to any zoning districts this time around. The idea being that there may in the future be zoning changes to the boundaries or district changes. But this is the foundation for those future amendments, it's just to get the article into shape so that it's consistent and internally consistent, and we didn't make major substantive changes this time around. It was just fundamentals.
The answer, the short, the short answer, Paul, the short answer is yes, we could change the boundary when we deal with this in the fall.
Okay, next.
Article eight, non-conforming uses.
Okay, this is the article that zoning board deals with, with non-conforming uses and structures. It will be voted in two separate parts, the first part is reorganization, housekeeping changes. Nothing of great substance being changed. The second part of it is to actually change the cohesive version of the exception to single lot exemption by creating a, a date by which a lot would have to be of record in order to take advantage of the exception in the future. Due to case law by the Supreme Judicial Court, anybody who has rights today under our unique version of the single lot exemption will still have those rights after this amendment. We cannot impact those rights, what this is intended to do is not to create new rights for new lots that may be created after June 30, 2023. Our bylaw in 1955 had a date similar to this, and then in 1978, we eliminated it. Right now, we have open-ended use of this unique exception that's unique to Cohasset, and the court has told us there's not much we can do about it, and this is to change that. So the second part of it would be to make that change, to put in a timeline.
Any other questions on that?
This has been unanimously supported by all the boards, including the zoning board tonight.
Thank you, Tom. Any other comments?
Just a one more, you're still going to join me in the town hall.
Yes, yes, because you guys, they're coming back, we're just trying to, you know, squeeze a lot of stuff in a very limited time. Article 12.
Article 12 is our administration and enforcement article, we've done some, again, housekeeping, reorganization, cleaning it up. Where it's a little more easier to read, we have the fine that is allowed under the zoning bylaw is currently a hundred dollars for each offense each day, it can only be assessed by the building inspector, not by the two boards. We're increasing that to the state maximum of 300, that also matches with our CONCOM can do under its bylaw. And then there are some changes to the site plan review process to make it clearer and more compliant with, with state decisional law. So it's just, this, this, again, this is the administration enforcement of what the two boards do and how they do it, and then this is just clear, necessary cleanups to it.
Thank you, Tom, comments from the board?
Tom, how did the ZBA vote on this?
CBA is five, zero, one, planning six, zero, advisory eight, zero.
Anything else? What is the, what is the, Jane?
I would feel comfortable making motions to recommend these on the warrant, I don't know how my fellow select board members feel. But at this point, we have seen multiple versions and presentations of this, our committees have voted. Corey, I know you had some hesitation, we could, you know, give ourselves a week, I suppose, and come back on April 4th, but we're jamming a lot, so.
I can't figure out the substantive that would change, I vote on these things. But I, I expressed dismay at how this.
Well, if it makes you feel any better, which of course it won't, we tackled pretty much all the stuff that was really not controversial. With Judge Cutler, the original charge to her was to go through this and make this a, our, our zoning bylaws conforming with the rest of the state and to take out any outliers. There will be more in fall, in the regular, or special town meeting in the late fall, and, and that could be interesting. But for now, the chair would entertain a motion.
We would move to recommend zoning bylaw amendment, article one. Currently proposed is article 18 on the warrant and article 13 administration as well.
We have a second. Motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? There are no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry.
I would move to recommend zoning bylaw amendment, article two, for title definitions.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve article two. Is there any further discussion? There are no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, extensions, motion carries unanimously, I think we can put all the rest of these.
I think you got to vote on one. I would move to recommend a town meeting zoning bylaw amendment, article three, establishment of zoning districts.
We have a, recommend article three, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, extensions.
I move to recommend a town meeting zoning bylaw amendment, article six, sign regulations.
We've, article six, all those in favor. Opposed, extension.
I move to recommend zoning bylaw amendment, article eight, non-conforming use of structures, and last second.
On article eight, all those in favor. Opposed, motion carries, article 12.
I move to recommend zoning bylaw amendment, article 12, administration and enforcement.
Oh, didn't we just call that?
I'm sorry, you got a motion in second, we haven't.
Oh, yeah, all those in favor.
Thank you all for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom, and Judge Cutler, it's always, thank you, it's an honor, your honor. Okay, back to town hall, Phil, you look like you're in pain. Okay, or do we have other comments, or if anybody in the audience wishes to speak on this? Okay.
So you're coming in 19 million now, just about?
It's the new appropriation, we've already, it's, the project's still 22, we've got 1.4 appropriated to date.
And you definitely kept it that way, then?
As we talked, yes, as long as nobody decides to make changes to the project, scope to be added, yes.
You know, because I, I'm just interested, you said something interesting, because it's a public project. A lot of people just, they did too. Also, just question mark, you know. And to your point, again, thank you guys for all the work, but. You know, there's been quite a few iterations, you said yourself, you're Billy Tom, just put an E in his name in office, and he's got a shelf full of all presentations or proposals, is that?
Studies in the past.
Studies in the past. You know, I still wonder, and we spoke about this last week, is, is taking the pulse of the town, you know, I look at it, it doesn't seem comparable. I still, I understand the charge, that that the alternatives were never out there, it's kind of. I mean, this little building. Restoring this building, taking down the annex, and parking over there, those are alternatives, that's not what I'm doing. There are alternatives, if you take this building as a standalone, restore it completely downstairs, you have two great areas, boilers. So I know with the HVAC, we do, I know we can do with it, that's my wheelhouse. You know, I understand when you look at the restoration of the old place, it's a can of worms. So, as I said last week, we have pleasing fire, municipalities, I agree with you that the employees have worked hard at this town. To their place, but I also think that the town should have been given some options. town should have been given some options, especially in light of the fact that the town hall's been voted down a number of times.
Mr. Gray, you were given a charge.
I understand. And we took, yeah.
And we, we completed the charge, right? We reported back into this committee and other versions of the select board for the past three years. There has been no change by the select board to change that charge. So if there is a difference of opinion in that charge to be changed and updated, the select board should provide this committee that's been working on it for three years, a new objective of the charge.
I agree with that.
Which has not been done. We have been continuously coming to these meetings. We've been continuously coming to these meetings, presenting the numbers as best we have. And the can keeps getting kicked down the road.
But there are different board members now.
There are, and this board has been here for at least a year.
I brought it up every time. You know, I just spoke.
But the charge has never changed.
It's important to me is that the town, you know, gets to say it. That's what I'm, that's what I'm interested in.
And kicking the can down the road and not putting it in front of town meeting and not providing the public with the information and not providing the public less than, you know, more than six weeks ahead of town meeting with the numbers of the tax implications, is not being transparent and communicating to the taxpayers of what this project is.
How do you mean? I'm sorry.
So we are less than six weeks away from town meeting, and we cannot describe to the taxpayers how this project is going to affect their taxes.
This project standalone, say it.
This project standalone, I agree. And so how do we then communicate that to the taxpayers? We have been coming to these meetings for weeks and months.
Yeah, yeah.
And it hasn't been communicated. The information has been there. The information has been updated along the way, and the information will be updated one more time right before town meeting. We cannot say we're not going to, we're not going to talk about it until we have the final one. Can't do that.
No.
The process doesn't allow it.
Well, it's getting it out there. I encourage it. It's getting it out there.
And we need the select board here to help get it.
But some select board, I'm not to speak with the select board, saying it's, but I think that the town, that's really, it's a PR campaign in there.
This conversation really should be called through the chair.
It should be through the chair, and I see another member of the committee who has not spoken yet, and I see Corey. Do you have any further comments?
No.
If I may, I just wanted to provide a brief background.
You have to identify yourself.
Here, I'm a copy of the Town Hall Building Committee. I was also on the last iteration of the Town Hall Building Committee, and that committee was charged with identifying every alternative for the Town Hall building. We looked at every piece of town home, town homes land in the town. We, I looked at whether or not we could do a greenfield site. Most of the land had wetlands issues. If it didn't have wetlands issues, it was going to cost an arm and a leg to bring in utilities and to create roads and all that kind of stuff, so it wasn't a realistic idea. But we looked at every single piece of land. We also looked at any commercially available buildings that were out there to see if they could be adapted to our needs. So we literally tried to see what every other alternative was, including knocking down the annex and keeping just this building and moving the offices as well. That was done as part of the 2018 version. And so when we received the charge for this version, it was felt that that work had already been done and that it had, you know, it had been determined that the best use of town resources was to rebuild here, and that is why the charge was set up the way it was. So I just wanted to provide that, that history. And it did pass, the project did pass at town meeting. It failed at the ballot box by 27 votes or something. So the project itself passed with almost 75%, if I remember correctly.
Thank you.
Corey? So, I mean, the discussion about, you know, Bobby again having the shelf of stuff, right? I mean, Paul brought it up as a, as a problem. I see it as a lesson, right? That we've, we've been there before, and the problem just keeps getting, the shelf keeps getting heavier. The problem not going all the way. The thing about alternatives, and I think what Mark was, was getting at, is that we can research alternatives. They cost money. Every time we do a feasibility study, it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. Then building a building costs money. I mean, to this point, you said we spent 1.7 million dollars just to design something. If we were going to design something else, we're going to spend another 1.7 billion dollars on designing something to this point, that way we can have options. And then at a certain point, as we wait, we've already seen, this building went from, you know, it went down to 22 million dollars from 10 years ago. This thing was 10 million bucks, 11 million bucks. Every year we wait, the costs go up. So there's a certain point where we have to hit the red button and say, all right, this isn't working out, right? We are spending more and more money to get to where we keep concluding it's the same thing. And we can spend all the money in the world researching alternatives. We can redo all this work. We're just going to spend more money and cost ourselves more money later on when we finally accept the fact that this building exists and we have to do something about it. I don't like it anymore. I wish we could, this was new. I wish we had done it 10 years ago, which is where fishes, you know, that's not where we are. Let's not add another book to the shelf. Let's get this done. We've got a great project. They've addressed a lot of the concerns of previous town hall projects. I like, I think this design is better. Let's save this building. Let's not add to that shelf. We're here.
Any other, Mr. Satchel? We're bringing a chair more seriously.
I don't want to be, you know, awesome, but the selectmen have done things in this plan that to me shouldn't be done and would save us hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that's the generator that you want us to put out in the back of the building, right in the residential area, for a building that has been here for 150 more years, you know, years, and never needed a generator. And with the codes, it has to be a diesel generator. That means you get all that smoke and all that that's going in the neighborhood. I suggested a $70,000 solution from an $800,000 cost for you folks that you voted on. I think you should be part of, you know, you are part of what's making the price go up yourself. And so I think that you should reconsider that. Still put a transfer switch in the town hall, the new town hall, and have it so if you really needed a generator there, you could bring a rental in or you could bring one of the others and just connect it up onto that, instead of having your own generator for 700, 800,000.
Thank you.
And that's just a little step.
Any other comments?
Could I just follow up? I mean, so this is, just for context, what is the, again, you guys probably talked about this a lot, so my apologies, I did. And this is, you know, again, I know the decision we made, the decision to have that generator, I guess it does have benefits when it comes to, I think this could be talked about, having this town hall be more resilient. So just, if we are doing a diesel generator, you're pointing out, what was the thought process to getting to that diesel generator? Because I'm guessing it was possible. Could you just give us some background about why that, doing the whole building is beneficial perhaps, outside of the cost?
Well, there's two things about it. First of all, there would be a very small generator to keep along the life safety and everything. This building would be able to, be able to come in and look at it, you know, do whatever like that. But it is, it is, it comes from the architect when, when the town includes us and others say, what do you, you know, what do you recommend?
Yes.
Right? And then it goes before, and then we're looking at what things cost. And this number just, you know, it's 5% of the cost of the project. And it's something that, in my opinion, and I, I don't need to say this and stuff, but I've generated all that other stuff, it's just not necessary for this building. And if it was necessary, we would have had a generator years ago.
So was there a vote on the committee yet?
No, the vote is here. You voted, okay. Would you come back to us and say, okay, now we have to put that in the plans?
It's not going on in a fully functional town hall.
Okay, I mean, I see the value in that, and again, as a part of the cost, and the, you know, the cost to taxpayer, you're talking single digits per year, really, to have a building which can function. So I mean, I understand the policy implications of that. I don't recall a conversation.
You have a, you have a two-foot snowstorm like we've had, all right? Everything is closed down.
Yeah.
You think the people are going to drive from home and go to work during that snowstorm? And in that recovery period? No, they're going to work from home.
No, we've had people in Wilco Commons. I mean, this is, we've all been there during things, and I think part of the discussion was Wilco as a, as a, you know.
Let's, let's bring all the discussion.
So, I mean, that's, that's, people have, my apologies, I'm just saying, people have sought out warming centers during, and so.
We have Wilco.
Okay, okay.
In any event, that's a decision that has been made, unless we want to revisit that. I also see the school facilities committee is here. I think what we would probably do is continue to hearing everybody else, and then towards the end of the session, we'll make votes as to what we want to do. Does that make sense to the board? Do we want to vote to recommend this before we hear school facilities committee?
Oh, we have.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we put the borrowing, the article for borrowing, article for town hall, sorry, we're done, 24 on to the boards.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to put that article on the warrant. For discussion purposes, I would like to table that until we hear from the other proponents, and then revisit that and not, we wouldn't discuss it and vote on it, but I want to hear everybody who's here before we start deciding which ones we may or may not approve.
So just a clarification, this is just to put it on the warrant, and assuming we have a vote tonight, put it on the warrant, which I think we will, regardless of what we table it right now.
Right.
I want to make sure that if we leave here saying it is on the warrant, that we are going to have the information necessary to go to advisory and capital.
Just one information. The board asked for one articles. So you have four one articles for each of the projects. Town hall, they were better for council. Town hall, fields, of course, school facilities, repairs, and so, yeah. So last, last week, the board asked to draft up, for me to, for the council, draft the articles on the, the four projects, and you have them now, draft articles. It just, it's just language that you can actually, this is what I agree with, but you have actual language if you want to. I would just say, I want to hear everybody who's here.
I understand that. I'm asking just for clarification. Are we asking to break the town hall away, or we're looking at moving everything over to special town meeting? That's what I was asking.
When we make that determination, but before we make that determination, I would like to hear opponents from the various things, so we can evaluate them and give them a fair shot. We've given the town hall a fair shot. I see the school facilities committee is here. We have roads and sidewalks. I'd like to hear what you have to say, and I'd like to hear on Fields on that thing before we vote on the whole thing. That's all.
The motion is a second. I think we need to decide whether we put this on the warrant. I think that's a basics of governance and a basics of, you know, town meeting. We have a warrant, we have a number ready.
I might suggest that I might change my vote, but I don't want to put in a position right now to make a, to make a vote for unless I've heard all, given everybody.
You're going to threaten to vote on a $20 million project based on when I make the motion?
No, I don't want to vote to, I don't want to vote to put it on the warrant right now. That's all. Just say, put it off, and tell these other people. I think it's only fair to let the other people speak. I want to hear what Paul has to say about roads and sidewalks. How much you're talking about.
Well, we already talked about it earlier. It's not just roads and sidewalks. I'm a person that we're looking at, which I'm moving things, having them ready, the special town meeting, my work, taking everything, including roads to sidewalks, and moving that the next time meeting, my effort to that.
That's what I think we may end up at. What I'm saying is, before we make that decision, I think it's fair to hear from the school facilities and from what you have to say and Fields. That's all, before we make that decision.
I think I just want to clarify, it just, Corey's motion is actually to put town hall on the warrant for annual town meeting.
Yes.
Jack is saying he wants to postpone holding the vote for that, if his motion is second.
Till we hear the other.
Till we hear the others, because that may calibrate a decision about what goes on annual and what goes to special. Not necessarily in agreement with that, but that, I think, is what.
I don't want to force, force an issue on the vote until every proponent who is here this evening has a chance to speak. That's, it is an opposed putting on the warrant. I'm just saying, I want to hear what everybody else has to say, because part of the very important issues that we're really thinking, we're facing is, when do we want to do that? Do you want to do it now? In the, in the upcoming town meeting, or do we want to have the, all of it done at the special town meeting in the fall? And I'd like to think, and I think the public would like to see all of the, before we work forward. And then we move forward on that. Obviously, if we're going to, if it's a will of the board to do it all in September, I certainly wouldn't vote to put town meeting on the warrant for this, for the upcoming regular town meeting.
At a certain point, we have to take votes and motions, and I'm not really comfortable with the idea of we're.
Well, that's fine.
Portraying this, we're going to hear sidewalks, and if we do sidewalks, well, you seem to be suggesting that there may be projects that we hear about now, which we would want to fund before this. I mean, if this is a needs-based conversation, they're ready to go, and we just heard that the laying in will cost money.
If it takes.
I can't imagine us learning anything else. As I said, I support all the other projects too, but it sounds like the conversation was kind of weird.
I don't, I would say, all I'm saying is, give every proponent an opportunity to speak or their position, because there's a limited amount of funds that are available, and we may force, and I'm not ready until I hear them to, to vote on this. And I'm not saying which way I will vote on it.
You know, I don't know if anybody has any more information than I do, but Robert's rules of order requires a vote.
Oh, no. This is the discussion. It does require, this is the discussion.
Question is, can it wait? I'm not sure it can.
Yeah, this is the discussion period.
Well, I would suggest, I mean, we can vote now, not hearing from the school facilities committee that's been sitting here for an hour and a half. And, you know, the schools are a substantial cost to that. So it's crazy to want to hear from them. And I would just say, on Fields and Rec, we know the price. It's 1.3 million. If we want to add in Beechwood and, you know, just do a brand new playground to the max, that's probably going to be 1.3 million that we can confirm with Michelle. We got 100,000 from CPC. You know, Mark, we've been waiting to hear from CPC on how much they get, because that determines what the debt exclusion ultimately has to be, that we have to vote on, right, for the taxpayers. And so that's a, that's a huge component of the project. But now we know, right, from the last vote, and we can move forward. We've been waiting for the Fields and Rec, Rec that exclusion as well, or the CPC contribution, and we know that was 150 for 3 million of a pretty substantial generational project on the Fields and Rec. So we know we're dealing with 3.5 million. I'd like to hear also from the school facilities committee, but I think what we're going to hear is that it's 1.5 million for stabilization fund. There's more than enough repairs that the schools need to do to fund that. We know the tax impact is going to be the same as town hall, based on how the math works out for debt exclusion as compared to essentially yearly capital.
Is there a further discussion on the motion on the floor?
You know, I would only say that I appreciate that people want to do action and get it done. I think if I, to me, based on the information I've heard from residents and voters, I think people aren't prepared for what's going to come. When they see this entire package, they don't have enough of the information, including on the finances, before them, and how, and whether we are best positioned to make the case for these projects. So I think we can race forward with it, because we just want to get it done for the sake of getting it done, but I'm not sure that's a path to victory.
Anybody from the town committee want to speak to that, or the town hall committee want to speak to this issue? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to put this on the ballot. All those in favor, say aye. I am. I am. I am going to vote aye at this point. The, I think it's premature, but I think we're going to have to, we're, we're going to have to put this in context. And I think this, we need to get the town hall, and I think they've done a good work. But I'm afraid that what's going to happen is even mobilize a good portion of people who want other things. You know, defeat this permanently in the, uh, at the, at the town meeting. So I, it's just kind of a strategic nade to keep it alive because I, I don't think, I, I think it's, you're, you're, you're seeing the people who are going to mobilize and defeat this. And I think this is the best project now. And I find to tell you, Corey, not force the issue, but it's been forced.
You can re-vote it later on. Someone else in the board can make a motion to feel different.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
This topic, you said something that was very interesting. Again, I won't emphasize, it's not that I am not against, I am not against that all. But I like its options. Is anything put down about, uh, I'd love to see that if there was anything, the thoughts and ideas about the different possibilities?
Yes, is the answer. Can I unearth it is another, but yes, is the answer. Um, Sam Wakeman and Jason Federico led the charge on that. Neither one of them are here now unfortunately, but.
Incredible job giving the charge and carrying it through. But again, I'm just above the options. Thank you so much for bringing that up. I'd love to just take a look at that. Like the further.
All right, so, uh, moving on next and. Could I, uh, before, just Phil, could you clarify something? We originally thought that CPC was going to go for five million and they came, is there a reason why they? CPC, yeah, 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 what happened?
We can ask Corey.
Conversation. At least four million and then the vote for one million plus.
So the conversation at CPC, right? And again, if you watch the recordings, all the CPC members reflected positive thoughts about the project. Their concerns were tying up what is a limited funding for from CPC. The CPC's message was that they believe CPC, and again, they believe CPC should be used for projects, but otherwise wouldn't be possible. Things that would, would get missed. And they felt that this is not something that would get missed and that it should go to the voters that way CPC funding isn't high.
Specifically to town hall.
Specifically for God, they wanted money available for other projects that came along. And, um, you know, but there was support for the project. Uh, Mr. Flex was the one that made the motion for the one million. Um, and I was understanding that it would be, it would not hurt the CPC budget. And it would be a symbol that CPC, you know, did support funding this project.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Phil.
School Facilities, Jason.
Howdy. Hey, Jason, how are you?
You're chipper.
Of course. Why wouldn't?
You're not sitting here.
Yeah. Um, so I, I, I'm a little confused right now on why I'm here. I was originally thought I was going to be here for a second article to put on, which was the feasibility stuff. But I want to pause there and discuss more about the, the one point five for renovations and, and fixing of our, of our schools. Because it is vastly important. I believe you've all seen the, the spreadsheets with all the numbers. Um, there's a key piece, which key piece, which is security, which I, I can't go into in a public forum, but I'd be more than happy to talk one on one with everybody what those are that need to get done. And the key point would be over the summer when the kids are, are not there. So I don't know how that transpires, but it's, it's something that, that is very important to me regarding recent events that have occurred. Um, so I don't think kicking this thing months down the road for this fund to get started, whether we know how to use it, I know how to use it, or whatever it is, all that stuff can be worked in the background to figure out how we can tap into it, get it, so on and so forth. Is, this is something that is needed. These schools, to my surprise, doing this research, research, when I got on this committee, there was no plan. These schools haven't been maintained. They're maintained when, oh, there's a leak, let's go put a bucket underneath it. Okay, it's, it's, I'm shocked that the schools are in the conditions that they are. And as much as I would love to say, let's build three new schools and make everyone happy, that's just, it's not possible. And I want to make sure that the schools that we do have, they're functional, they are safe. Because a lot of the parts and pieces in these schools are at their life expectancy. So that's what I wanted to say on the article, whatever, I don't even know what words were written on that article, quite frankly. Um, because I know when we first admitted it was for feasibility and I want to pull the feasibility out of it. We can talk about that separately, but it's important that these schools be maintained.
I have some questions just about, again, and then I think I'm a little dense on some of this stuff. But we're talking about especially establishing a special state of, a special purpose stabilization fund that's directed to the schools that would provide an influx of cash each year over two and a half. Um, to, that can be directed specifically for school capital projects. So one of the questions I have like right now is if, if this were to get on the warrant and if it were to pass, um, in the budget for FY twenty-four, is that correct? So starting on July first of twenty twenty-three, there would be an extra million and a half available through appropriation at a subsequent town meeting for school capital projects. Right?
Yes, so if you vote the FY at the ballot and all those part of July part, that money needs transferred into specials purpose stabilization plan to be appropriated at a future time.
Okay. And then my question is for some of these immediate concerns, because there are some immediate concerns. I wonder what currently is teed up within the operating budget and the capitals, but just the regular capital, um, budget.
There's a fully funded option to improve security at OSCE that was negotiated by the school committee and manager. I can't speak to any more about that. But it's a fully funded appropriation to improve security at OSCE that has been ready to go for months. That has been rejected. I can't go into more details about it. I don't know why, because it rejected by school, by schools. The school committee rejected.
Could we have an executive session on that?
Yeah, yeah, that's the only question I have.
Thank you.
And I will, I will, we have a, right, Michelle, it's a fully funded option to improve that right now, and we can do it. We just need to approve about the.
Just for OSCE?
The other ones are, as far as I understand it, the other ones are, OSCE had a unique situation of the way they're going. Yes. Um, and again, so it's been, Michelle is right, Michelle can give you much more about this, but we'll, we'll talk about it in the executive session.
The reason, the reason I ask is because, you know, as we've been discussing all night long, I mean, there are so many needs and desires. And, and we have a responsibility to try to address all of them. It's impossible to do it one thing, but I want to make sure that we are addressing the absolute immediate must happen as soon as July first rolls around or, or, or whatever. So that we can take care of that regardless of what the special purpose stabilization fund might do or might not do or gets approved. It doesn't get approved, like, I want to make sure that we can, we can properly message that this money is needed to enhance what is already being, was, what is in front of you within the operating budget.
Okay, I think.
This is extra.
Yeah. I can speak a little bit to that. I think I could speak to that without going into, um, into details that are, that are, need to be kept confidential. Um, but money was appropriated, it was given to the schools for, for a security related issue a while ago, and that wasn't done.
I'm unaware of that.
Okay, all right.
So, Jeff, so I tried to, I talked to Colin and the schools are going to have an executive session on Wednesday in part to discuss some of these issues. And then the select board is going to meet, um, find a time that works for all of us to do another executive session jointly with the school committee, that's our intent, including to address some of these issues. I'm not sure money is necessarily the issue on this one in terms of, we just need to start making some decisions. And also, um, again, some of this might not be necessarily a money issue, at least for this cycle. And so I, I think and, I think and hope, um, that we don't necessarily need to do something for this immediate town meeting to address an immediate issue, including in the summer. Um, and I think that if we have to, we still have a hundred thousand in our funds that could cover a differential if we really had to do something on an emergency basis. Um, you know, just based on sort of the back end, that's what I'm hearing. So what I would suggest is completely hear you, I mean, we have kids in the schools, we have best interest um, in ensuring our schools are completely safe. I think, and, and to get the work done as soon as possible in the middle of the summer. I think, um, the reality is with the school stabilization fund, we already weren't going to be able to spend the money anyway until special town meeting, because we have to figure out exactly what we're going to appropriate the money for. Because town meeting still needs to vote that through and it needs to go through the capital, capital budget process, which there's no way we have the time right now to do so. So as a practical matter, there's no effective difference between doing it now, creating the fund now versus creating it in the fall. Because we did research and Jennifer contacted the DOR for us. And we think that we can create the fund and spend it at the same time at fall town meeting. I think it would, um, I think we all know, Jason, based on the work of the school facilities committee and the great work, um, that you all have been doing in pretty to create the ten year plan, the special items. But there's a lot of ways to spend that money. We just need to figure out what is the right, is one point five the right number for the stabilization fund? I know we sort of came up with that, but I think maybe we need to think that through a little more and about that a little more. And then even if that is, no matter what the right number is, what are the specific items? Because there's more than one point five million left. So, you know, what do we need to do first and then get?
Which has been done.
Yeah, and, and get the necessary information, including the background and estimates, et cetera, and move through that process. Um, which is why I personally think that special town meeting, I think, would be fine. And we're going to get to the same result anyway on the school stabilization fund. But I think it would be helpful, particularly when we're going to ask voters to essentially pay a significant amount for that fund, to have a, a pretty concrete and well advertised plan out there. And exactly what we're talking about, um, with obviously the exception of the security project. So I just wanted to throw in some of the practical realities of the timing and what that extra time gets us. And if there's interim issues, how I think we can address them, although I'm not sure if this is necessarily.
I would just, just, we just did put town hall off, the same process. And there's very sound reasons why we're doing, we're doing that Diana.
Yeah, I, I, I actually think in the case of the special purpose, special purpose stabilization fund for the schools to tee it up at the same time they are asking for the appropriation, that you're asking for the specific project money, I think is going to be super helpful. I, I really do think that's, I mean, we've been talking, the politics of all these decisions are complicated. But I think if we go and ask for what is, what is an override, um, and we can say all of this money this year is going to, on, on, on these four projects, which we wouldn't be able to do now. And to Jean's point, it, it just muddies, it just leaves open, um, and questions aren't answered. So I think, I think it makes more sense to have it together.
Um, Diana, Corey, we.
Yeah, please. Um, so, and talk with a lot of other people, like, I don't think there's any question about the fact that this stuff needs to be done. I think the mechanism is what we're stuck. And, um, the special purpose stabilization, but I think this board was like, this is a great idea and we really kind of embraced it. But it's unique nature created questions that will take a longer time to answer. So if there are higher pri, if there are priority options that could happen, we have a capital, what is it, a capital override option for? Capital exclusion. So, so what I don't want to have happen is the fact that we've chosen the wrong mechanism to prevent stuff from happening, right? So we have a, you know, if you said there were two million dollars of safety up there, you have to do right now, we could do a capital exclusion and just say, this will be important, this will be, make that argument. By doing this, a special purpose stabilization fund, we're introducing a bunch of other questions about what we're going to use this money going forward. And that's what, you know, I think we politically have to understand we're doing. If there's stuff that we need to get done and it's a capital exclusion and it's important, we can get that done. If, but we have to be careful about attaching the baggage of an override which exists in perpetuity. And we think we want to get that funding to keep on going. So there may be a combo here that we still have to figure out. Um, but because we agree we need to have them, but we just, we want to be sure we choose the right mechanism. That way we're not baggage with, with erroneous stuff.
I just also want to say that I, I think that we all need to commit especially to, when we're talking school safety and we're talking any physical building, degeneration, that, um, there are things that are going to be emergencies. I want to make sure that the, the requests are in front of capital budget right now, that we haven't reviewed for the warrant, that is part of the operating budget, that they're getting funded or that, you know, that we pay attention to that or that we have to go to a reserve fund or something to, to, to get emergency cash for something that has to happen, that, that, that is, those are options that we have to commit to. Because we, we can't let, we can't let things slide anymore. We've been playing dodgeball, I keep saying for the last couple of weeks.
Absolutely correct. And that's exactly what we're doing. We're trying to do it in fair and equitable manner for all segments of the community. Emergency, security things, well, obviously that's in a whole separate category. And I'm not at liberty to discuss them, but I can assure you that they're, well, whatever, I won't discuss it, but I think you can read between the lines. Um, the, anything else for school facilities? So now, thank you, you know, very much. So now.
Did you want me to go over the feasibility?
Why don't you give us a little bit, when in our previous discussion, and the board members may disagree, but my understanding is we wanted to make sure that it was a, um, to look at the infrastructure needs of the schools as opposed to, um, planning for a new school or something like that, just an assessment of, in, in a sense, emergency needs.
Well, I just also want to point out that these numbers that I've had, I've had for a year and a half.
Yeah.
And was sent around to everybody and nobody did anything with them. So that's why this past like four months, I just took the ball and ran with it. You know, it stinks that this is what it's become. Um, but I hope moving forward that we can get this fund. These schools need to be done, and not just security. There's HVAC that's end of life. I mean, I do HVAC daily, that's my job. I've looked at these things, they're frigging atrocious, they, they should be replaced, they need to be replaced. Um, so, yeah, let's, you know, if that's your vote to move it further down. And if that's what you think the voters will, will go for, then, you know, my personal opinion is it needs to get done sooner than later before we have more problems that creep up. But, you know, it's up to you guys what you want.
Jason, could I describe clearly to us just the feasibility study as currently conceived, what the delivered work product would be? What is it?
For the new school, middle, high school.
Well, a couple of weeks ago, uh, Craig, yeah, last week, sorry, said the feasibility study isn't just about building a new school.
It's not.
Okay, so what, what data will it give us that helps you? Give us what that report will show.
Sure, well, right here, there was a lot of confusion on whether we could double up with the MSBA.
Yeah.
And through talking with our consultants, there is a large portion that. And through talking with our consultants, there is a large portion that if we chose to do this feasibility. Can be repurposed, okay, the first column is if we just did. Feasibility and conceptual design phase. And it's, I think it was four forty seven on the bottom. I just believe what that number is, yeah, four forty seven. The one in the middle is if we just said to the M S B A, we're going on our own, that's a million bucks. Now, potential reuse is the green column. And we can reuse everything from environment to sites, other partial to feasibility, partial of schematic design. So three hundred and thirty five, seven fifty. So really, the town would be in it for, oh, my math is off, but a hundred thousand. If that, now what that consists of is. Reevaluating. Existing conditions again. Educational visioning, educational programming, so it's not just about the building, it's about the education for our children. Development of space planning, the phase one. Which is up there, the geology, hazardous materials, environmental assessment, what and delineation, soils, site survey, traffic study. The conceptual design would be include. Community and district design forms to gather input on the project, review sustainability, net zero health. Building design approach. Evaluation of alternative options. And sexual architectural building for addition, renovation and or new construction. Depending on what this all comes, because some of us on the committee are still not sold that a brand new building needs to happen. So this would, this would tell us one way or the other. Preliminary project designs, if we so choose, estimated range of construction costs for each of the. Conceptual designs, those would be a ballpark figure and any preliminary total project budget for the for the designs. So that's what everything in that.
That's helpful for us to know what, you know.
Because, you know, as the committee chair, I filled a lot of, you know, emails and calls, well, how much does it cost? I don't know, is it new? I don't know, I don't.
The feasibility study will give us a better lens, if you will, focus on.
Correct.
On if we're rebuilding, if we're renovating. And you've got a good job explaining why perhaps we'd be more on that. Can you describe how you see that new information kind of coming through and guiding you? I mean, it's to the either or, is there any kind of? You just explain it more.
Sure, I mean, if if. The study comes back and says the envelope is solid as it is, but the interior could could use. A lot of rework, well, that tells, well, I'm gonna get a renovation. But if they come back and say, well, your building envelope is failing, this is failing, that is failing, then the root is, well, we really can't salvage this building. So we're gonna have to do something, and if we do new, where?
How much of that do we have already looking at, if we spend more than that, because they gave us a lot of data, but I'm not quite sure how useful it is.
Yes, they gave us an existing study of the conditions of the, this goes a step further. Saying whether or not, because we didn't instruct them to do anything, that give us an evaluation of what each individual building is. As of a year and a half ago, we didn't tell them to, okay, now that you know that what this looks like. What are our options? Do we go new, do we go no, what do we get, this is the next step.
So that's, that's, that's good, Claire, nice to know. We're doing and that may be a value and whatever we decide to do doesn't denigrate that, we're just trying to. Be fair to all of them and trust me. You now, you know what this town hall committee. Has been dealing with, because they were in the same position that you are now, a number of years ago.
And just to also let this committee know. We'll be reaching out to you in the next week or so, because we are resubmitting to the M S B A, so Dr. Sullivan is finishing up his papers.
Very helpful.
Is your vote first.
Diane.
Yeah, just when you were talking, you know, one of the things that you might find out is the building envelope is strong, but it's gonna cost us X million dollars. Completely do what you need internally and. For X plus just a little bit more, you could, you know, actually have. Different kind of approach, maybe not a completely building, I mean, site.
I would just like to have those answers to give the community to know one way or the other.
So.
And that's all I'm here for.
I'm gonna, and this is not against you, it's just, I have to say this because I started meeting. But like, you know, I wish I, I wish we were having this discussion two months ago. You know, that four forty seven is very palatable and it actually. If we get accepted and when we get accepted into the M S B A program. It's real, it's only a a net spend, I guess, of a hundred, if if all of that information can be taken care of transfer. The question I have is. It's a one time four hundred and fifty thousand dollar ask. And what's the best way to fund that? And, you know, could this have been pushed through? You know, is it, might we have enough free cash for that, could this have gone through capital budget somehow or, you know? What are our funding options?
Could I ask one follow up?
Yeah.
So the other question is timing, so if we do this now, you know, we talked about. Jean talked about the cycles and, you know, landing on the right cycle, because we've got something that works, if we, you know. How does it benefit us doing it today versus waiting for the M S B to come back and fully funding it? A year.
Well, from the sense I got with the M S B A. Would show them that the town is one interested, the town supports it.
Is that valuable?
Yeah, oh yeah, okay, very, very valuable, that's my opinion, you can talk to others that may have different opinions, just in my conversations with them. That that shows that the town is committed to do something.
Okay, any other comments or any comments from the board, anybody in the audience would like? Jason, thank you very much and thank you for your patience, you've learned a lot about the town.
Yeah.
You know?
Always fun.
I just asked one more question.
Wait, I have one question. Does the school facilities committee receive this money and decide how it gets spent? Who decides if we?
I would hope it it would be us, but we would, I would, I would guess apply through either. He is, I don't know who controls.
So that is the decision, okay.
So, I mean, if if this money were appropriated for this particular feasibility study, it would go through procurement and 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 be very narrow. There's no, there's no question that's what we're spending it on. My question is, is on the timing, you know, like how quickly, if the money were appropriated, could you actually start tipping off these steps? And and is that eighteen months worth of study or is that six months?
I'd have to check with A I three, but they could probably jump on it within a month or two.
Any other questions? It's just, Jason, thank you very much. Okay, moving on, I think, now let's go back to our original thing, do we want to authorize a special town meeting? Special election for fall. How does the board feel about this, sort of the discussions, it's kind of been the undercurrent of everything we've been talking about?
I mean, I think. My position is pretty clear, yeah, I would move that we move that we. Do a special town meeting, a special election in the fall, preferably early October, as early as we can within reason. Allowing Jennifer time to get the free cash ready and certified.
Yeah, I just want to let you know that June thirty. So that's when I ramp up to close the books, get future certified, I cannot guarantee that's being certified. Additionally, Chris did ask me what I usually get certified in my other community, I have all my processes in place, so we always got it certified on the ninth of September. But here I can guarantee that. I just want to let you know that, usually here you always got it certified. That's tradition.
You probably have a good idea.
But I do want to let you know that I don't want. You vote on that, no one that will be done.
Thank you.
Okay, as early as possible in the fall on the work with Jennifer. To hold a special town meeting and elections to deal with. The various infrastructure projects, including town hall, including school stabilization, roads and sidewalks.
We have a motion made and seconded to authorize a special town meeting, early fall to. Address funding and related issues of. New town hall, town hall, fields and courts, roads and sidewalks, school facilities, anything else? Okay, school stabilization. We have a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
So, you know, as we're talking about this. Recently, I just, I I kind of don't see the use for the special time, right? Because, I mean, Jason just, I think, answered a lot of really good questions we had about the facilities study and, you know. I am with that information more comfortable asking for town for money right now for that purpose, and as he described, I think that is very, very relentless. The roads and sidewalks stabilization fund, we have, you know, the roads and sidewalks are fully funded for you. Right, so if we raise taxes in the fall and the special thing, it's not gonna help us do anymore. I think that fund would be better served if Paul's sidewalk study committee came out with a full set of recommendations. And then we can have that for annual, well, we spent the money that's been appropriated already and we're ready to go for another round. We've done a year of work and study and we're also at annual town meeting, so we also, we're gonna get hit a little bit for having a special town. It's just how this, for the politics of this town law, so. Article twenty six for the road to sidewalk, I don't see any benefit to having a special, I think it's only because we're gonna be less, we're not gonna be as prepared. It's not gonna let us do any more work, it's just gonna cause people to tax us well sooner. The special purpose stabilization fund for schools, as I just said, if there's high priority stuff, we can do that now. I know, as Mr. Creighton pointed out, there's a lot of stuff that has been funded that's certainly worked through, so I don't see us doing it in the fall. Making any of that stuff faster and to Jean's point, if there is stuff that comes up, if we get free, if there's stuff that's really important, we have a different mechanism for that, we can get that taken care of. And now with, you know, with the other projects that are ready. I don't see any reason to wait, I don't see a reason to rate this sort of town hall or for fields or for feasibility stuff, so. I just don't see a purpose to make to making a special meeting at this point because of those reasons, and I think it just works for our disadvantages, because we're gonna be confused and they're gonna. Come into the meeting just for. Thank you, Corey.
Jean.
So, you know, Corey, just to be clear, like, I really wanted to get these projects underway, we did try to see if we could extend. This upcoming town meeting in part because. We had a lot of things coming together that felt like we were like right on the cusp, but we just weren't there yet. Including with our committees like capital and advisory, and I do think it's important. That. We give that process, the committee process, the time, even though we feel like we're more comfortable and ready with it. And those advocating for these projects feel like that. I think that there's still other process yet to be done, including. Again, even though I feel, I would feel comfortable voting on it myself all right now, that's because I've steeped in it week after week after week, I just, I'm just not sure. That our residents have frankly gotten all of that information and messaging out that I think we could do a good job on during the summer. And so, you know, it's been a lot of back and forth over the last few weeks, like. You know, we've been trying and gun to get these things done, but just haven't been able to make it and it's disappointing, but I think it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, my perspective is we have been. Working very hard, I mean, three or four meetings a week. Subcommittee, subcommittee meetings. We have to make sure that our boards and committees have had a chance to properly weigh in on this, this is very time. Consuming and. We've been, we really would quite honestly like to get this done and figured out. However. We are in a situation, and the blunt reality is, as Diane has mentioned, we have a lot of deferred projects. A lot of deferred needs with various degrees of urgency, we don't know all the degrees of urgencies yet, even though we've been trying. And so, but we do know these things are out there, they are not going away, they do have to be addressed. And we need to address them fairly, we can't ask one. Portion of the town to be neglected, we can't ask one. Portion of the town to get more or less, we need to be fair, we're looking at the money of our taxpayers, they work hard for it. And in order to do a really just way of doing that, we need to. Do every project and we have a long term financial planning, we put that into place last spring, and why did we do that? Because we recognize we need to find out what things cost and start weighing priorities. And the thing is, we need to be fair to all elements of the town, we know we need schools, we know we need roads, we need all these other things. And it would, we just cannot do that with justice to the town in the timeframe, so to put it off and then. The advantage is we have a town meeting that is focused just on these issues. We have a lot of work and I think the members of the board are gonna find our summer vacation is going to be town business. So anyway, that was my comment, are there any other?
Yeah, I just.
And then, Corey.
I mean, I I I look at the ask for this, this school. This feasibility study, for example, and it was. Just, I'm gonna, I'm out of both sides of my mouth, because in in one, in one case last week, that number was a million five. We were asked for a feasibility study, in addition to the one and a half, one million and a half in the special stabilization fund and. It's four seventy five and to me, or four forty five or whatever it is, to me, it's. Needs, that needs to happen and it needs to happen sooner to get us to a place where we're actually have something concrete to talk about. Either internally within the town or with M S B A and it's a small amount of money. I also have to say that, you know, I said it earlier in this meeting, the fact that we're gonna defer tennis courts for another almost two years from today. Is absolutely shameful, it's just shameful, it's sick, I'm sorry. And, and. You know, but there's, there's nothing we can do about it, we can send it to, we could vote tonight to do those two projects, just because I have a compelling argument. That you agree with, but. It's not even in front of advisory and capital, it's, it's not even there and it's just super frustrating. We also have, mind you, this is a huge lift for a special town for any townie, right, in the fall, but so be it. We're also supposed to be taking up all the zoning articles, which arguably have sometimes even more impact, so, and that's gonna be a second town meeting in the fall? I mean, we really need to think about what we're asking of our boards, our committees and the people in this town to really swallow. A whole bunch of incredibly important things that we've been talking about for ten years. So, you know, I I I understand, we have to have a meeting with all of these things, I wish we could tick something off this this spring, but.
Thank you, Nick, for it. I I don't think it's, it's a, it's a mystery to anybody or it's a, it's a secret, but there's, you know, still on this board and, you know, typically I'm a minority, I'm on the fence. So I'm going to encourage my colleagues to try to listen to me, not as a, someone on the other side of the three two split, but. This is reasonable and it's not anything more than that. If you think about. The special stabilization funds. I cannot see a situation where. Funding them at a special, by that I mean specifically in a way, the September or June. Town meeting will cause us to be able to do any more work. Where we can't pave more roads, we've already, we have a million dollars in that account, we're already setting it, we're not gonna plan new sidewalks by then. When it comes to the school stabilization fund, there's, we've all talked about, there's stuff already being built. It would be money we'd be collecting and we can't spend, so there's no project. That is so important that we can't do. In the three months between this new town meeting and what is special or even annual, like, that's gonna be the question, why do we have to fund this now? And there's just nothing there that you need it for, it just isn't. So I support creating a fund and I support funding it and I want to see it get done. But practically speaking, if we walk around and collect a million and a half dollars from the residents of this town, it's just gonna sit around for eight, ten months until we figure out what to do with it. Right, and and that just, it's just not how this should work, so I think. Creating a new, all that, all the expense, all the stress, all the extra work. Is just inefficient when it doesn't benefit. So that's why I'd encourage my colleagues to not have this, on the other side. We, to Diane's point, we have a bunch of stuff that can get done. Tennis courts. You know, the feasibility study. Which, if we wait on those, there is a cost. There's a cost to not doing tennis courts. It's another year of play that our, you know, our tennis team can't, you know, benefit from. On the feasibility study, it's another, you know, is, that's why I asked Jason that. What does this buy? And he was clear. It buys us information that can help us along the road, especially as we go into MSBA second term around. That's a, that's a real benefit to have that money now. Town Hall Building Committee told us, you know, if we don't have the money now, there's going to be costs. So I've got three things that have costs for delay, and two things which have no, doesn't, we can do it later. It doesn't, it doesn't actually help us to do the rest of this. That's why I'm where I am. It's not because I disagree with your priorities. It's not because I disagree with what you're trying to do. I'm just speaking practically about how would the town spend its money and how we collect money. It doesn't get us any farther down.
Okay, thank you, Corey.
Well, I'll be brief. You know, Corey, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I do. It's nothing I like. I'm not a birthday man. I'd love to see Fields take that. But even when I came on this board, I saw them, every time we seem to come to some sort of closing. You know, the one was pulled out of the pack. Oh, what about the neighbors? What about parking? What about this? What about that? What about D and R? So it was always, for every solution, it was a problem. And I think that's why things have moved down the road, because this board can't address everything. You know, I mean, I look at the fields. My thought's this. You know what? Fields have lights. You bought a house across the street from the field. Your choice. So that's the way I look at it. But we have to take it own account. We have to take it own account. Now, I would love to see the tennis courts. My daughter's playing tennis on the tennis team. Love to see the fields for her. I mean, I think a town like this should have everything it deserves. I really do. And the best of everything, it should be a town that people do want to come to. Something competitive, something that we can bring in small amounts of revenue, if not just that, safety for our children. So my only thoughts about moving this down to a special town meeting, I hate it. I don't like it at all. But we're asking the town is to take a big hit, because, to, to use Diane's terminology, we have moved things down the road with deferred projects. I would love to pass over it, including the town hall, if we had it. But I just don't think, you know, I said maybe fortress supports, cherry picking. I agree and I disagree, but it is, it's the same. This is what we have. This is what we need presented as clear as we can. And not to use the word sell, but when you use the word sell it to the town. That's, I don't think, if we hit them with the, all right, so we want to do the field for a million five, or three, two million. Yes, I'd love to. We want to come back and hit you again for this. You know, it's like someone constantly going in the back of your wall. And so, you know, that's my only thing about that. Again, I agree with you on everything you said.
So, and, and that's the thing. It's like, they're going to hit differently. What Jennifer's been explaining to us is like, if we do debt exclusions, the hit is pretty small, right? It, it, it comes up, and you actually, because it gets spread out over, the matter of fact, but the million and a half dollars stabilization for the schools is going to hit rough math here, double from the ground, just as hard as the town hall and fielding courts to your tax dollars. Right? So they're, they're rated very differently. So if we're, if we're talking about the stuff that's debt exclusion, we can tell the town, we're rating all this done for 400 bucks. That's what we can do. We can, I think Jean said that, that fields basically add up to 50 bucks a year for me. Why don't we wait on that? Let's do it. But the other funds are going to hit for a huge amount. We do a million five, and then we do a half million. That was, I don't know, again, we're talking $800. In tax laws for those funds, they're going to be more than all this other work combined. That's why I'm saying the impact will be, we can, the impact won't be zero, but it's, it's differently weighted. And I think we should do the fields, to your point about how it kept getting chopped down, that's part of the process. But then we landed a floor, we said, this is it. This is what we got. Let's do it. You know, we had a bunch of things. We want to do a parking lot. We want to do a parking garage. We want to do a bowling alley. I mean, everyone's got an idea, right? But the process gets us to a point where we say, yeah, you know, this is, this is pretty good. Do we all agree 100%? No? I mean, do you think that this is necessary? That is necessary? No. But I think we're all at the same point to say, we've got a pretty good thing here. Let's do it, right? And I think we have to recognize when that comes about. We're there with fields. We're there with town hall. And I think this, Jason's going to have a lot of questions to answer, but frankly, I think we're there with facilities, with school facilities feasibility study too. And that hit's going to be smaller than the other stuff we're asking for. It's going to be a lot smaller. We can do it.
I have a nice question, if I could. Is that all right?
Oh, yes. Yeah. But technically, it has to go through the chair. Pretend, pretend you're talking to me, but ask for it.
If we look at, well, if we look at some of the smaller projects like that, like the fields.
Fields and rec, depending on whether we add in Beachwood or not.
I think we'd have to add in Beachwood.
So, Michelle, remind me, it would be 3.3 essentially, when all is said and done, if we add in Beachwood. So 3.3 at a 30-year debt exclusion would be $60. Michelle, uh, Michelle, Jennifer, I think that'd be around $60 to start trailing downwards for 3.3 million debt exclusion for the average household.
Yeah, I want to give you a second.
And listen, I, I mean, personally, I would love to do, but I'm worried in fairness to town hall sitting out there feeling very frustrated. And the schools, it.
Those are, to me, are big ticket items. I mean, this is not a small ticket, but I don't disagree with that. I think that, you know, we do at some point got to show people that we're starting a turn of earth. I don't disagree with that, but we have big ticket items, town hall, schools, that's going to be an ongoing one. Yeah. This is this, you know, whether, you know, police and fire, those.
So is the sense to put fields and rec on as a debt exclusion?
I would lean towards that, because I just think that the town's got to see that this board, you know, we got to negate some of these 143 complaints and reviews about who does what, what does what. Aren't your quarterback essential? But they have voice, and I'm just, I'm just weighing what, I'll go along with four. I like it, but I don't disagree with seeing something and moving, we have a lot of your infrastructure projects. We do. They're not going away. And maybe that might simplify us at the second, at a special town meeting, going in with a big, you know, a big wish list.
I would like to have been able to do that, but then the question is, which one do you approve? If you were going to go down, maybe we'll do a little here and a little there, then we're saying, well, what is a really one that's shovel ready? And that's a town hall. And then we say, but that's too much. And then we go to, well, we'd like to have a new tennis court or a new lacrosse field, which we'd all like. And, and then, you know, it's, oh, it's only $60 here. It's only this. But that 60, or that 40, or that 115 on your tax rate starts to add up. And the sum totality of what we're going to be asking this town to pay is significant. And we can't pretend it isn't otherwise. Now, allowing, I mean, I listen to the school people arguing, I want the stabilization for the school people. And they're arguing against town halls, saying, say, town hall project is front-running the money, and they'll get paid. And, and if we really, and the reason we're trying to do this is so we make sure that every element of the community, and every demand is allowed in the same forum to, to, to make their argument, and there will be hard decisions.
I'm just, because you, you work on the finance, I've just considered the low-hanging fruit. Then we go to the high stuff.
Well, we have a motion on the floor and discussion. Is there any further discussion?
I moved a table.
So.
Okay, is that appropriate?
Why do we do the?
Or we cannot? Because if we're talking about moving stuff forward, we're kind of stuck where we're four hours. Okay, I, I would.
If I may just interject on the fields and courts, and I'm just going to say something I've been thinking about. You know, the fact that CPC gave us $120,000 for a generational project for fields and recreation is to me not a great use of CPC funds. We should be able, we should have funded all of those tennis courts through CPC funding.
We could have funded everything.
We could have funded everything. And so I'm a little reluctant to begin hitting the tax levy for things that we have money for with CPC if.
But we don't control CPC.
Whatever the issue was with CPC that led to those decisions, right?
Yeah.
And so I, I do, I do wonder if there's additional sources of funding. We should really vet harder before we ask people to pay their own taxes, particularly if we're going to ask them to pay for things like a town hall or school stabilization. The, the more we can work to try to reduce the tax impact, the more success I think we're going to have. And I think we should be hitting CPC harder on some of this recreational.
And I would point out that we'll have, be in a position to do that after the May elections, because there's some terms coming up. But I also think that it, this doesn't preclude, preclude us in the interim moving forward with some of the low-hanging fruit that we can finance through CPC or free cash or whatever. We're obviously going into detail, we're going to be funding some, some other security-related things that we make, which can be done, so it doesn't prove that.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I believe that I have to turn a council, the select board could amend the CPC's recommendation and increase it. CPC is going to generate conservatively. Jennifer's asked $7 million over the next 10 years as a conservative, $7 million, no tax coming in anywhere. And another 9 million after that. So I, 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 I believe you have the ability to amend their recommendation. I get, I check, I, I don't see why you couldn't. I get, I have to double-check by the council. If this board says, hey, you know, it's your warrant, they have to make the recommendation. But I think you can amend their recommendations on the floor. I, 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 I think it's worth, because of the sheer amount of money. And again, I, I'm not questioning their act, but I got to tell you, I was stunned to watch them leave $7 million a week over the next 10 years.
And it might, if I just add, I've been thinking about this too. Again, this is why it's a problem that we're a week away from closing the mark. Because we are going to get pushback from our partners in this process at Capital and Advisory. We just are, and it's, it's, it's going to potentially sink all of these projects, as much as we want to bring some across the finish line. This is, this is how this is supposed to work. With respect to CPC, I could not agree more. And that's people's tax dollars. It's like when we talk about, when I say we need to put it in the context of water and sewer. People don't know the difference. I don't really, I mean, I know, because I'm in this seat, and I make, I've made this my life for 12 years to know what's going on, but most people write a check to the town and go has it. They think it's going to the town and go has it, and we pay for sewer, and we pay for water, and we pay for fields, and we pay for schools, and we pay for public safety. And so the fact that CPC, frankly, we've been irresponsible about utilizing that money that we're collecting from the taxpayers. And frankly, to some degree, sorry, Russ, we're hoarding it. I mean, this is money that we need to invest in things that we don't want to, you know, add another tax assessment on to people's taxes. So, you know, I don't know what the right mechanism is, but I think even if we were to consider an amendment, it's, we've missed the vote. We've just missed the vote.
Thank you.
I do think we missed the vote, which is why I would press again for us to, you know, to do the special fall election, because I think that would address some of these issues, even though I know it's not ideal. So I'd call the vote.
The vote has been called. All those in favor, call the votes, say aye.
Repeat the motion, please, that we're voting on.
So we're putting everything into, putting it off, everything to the form?
Yeah.
The infrastructure items, town hall, fields and courts, stabilization fund, that's in sidewalks.
My only question is, why that vote's even necessary?
We've called the vote. When you call the vote.
Because you can make a, you can make a, you can make a.
Corey, point of order, when the vote is.
Call an annual town meeting.
Corey.
A special town meeting.
Corey.
Later on, right?
When the vote has been called, there's no further discussion.
I'm asking, I'm just asking.
I'm just saying, there is no, Corey, you are out of order. There is no, no. There is no, when the vote is called, Robert's rules of order.
I'm just asking a question. What is it?
There is no further discussion. Vote has been called. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, the, the vote has been called now.
We have to do the whole vote.
You have to do the whole vote.
Yeah, I know, I know. No, that's what I know. Yeah. Okay, the ayes.
Aye.
Aye. We're calling the vote.
Nay.
I'm going to say, I.
This is to call the vote. This is not the vote on the motion.
Are we voting on the motion?
No, we're voting to stop discussion, so we can vote. All right, we have three ayes and two nays. All right, now before us is the motion made by Jean to do our major capital projects in a special town meeting in the fall to discuss town hall, fields and courts, roads and sidewalks, school facilities, and school stabilization fund. We have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying roll call vote.
Can we do a discussion? I have a question.
I think when the vote is called, there's no more discussion.
I think that this is a big project, Mr. Chair. I think that should discuss.
We closed off discussion on the motion.
When you call the vote.
There was no second one called, I think.
When you call the vote. Then we can do that, do it off. But when you call a vote, that ends discussion. And then you proceed to the vote if the call to the vote is made. This is basic Robert's rules of order.
Yeah.
There's been a question as to whether the second was heard, so I will call the vote again. I think Jean called the vote. We have second. I will second it. All right, to call the vote, which is a vote on the previous motion. I'm going to, the, all those in favor, well, I'm going to call the role, Corey.
This is the vote on the calling of the vote?
Calling to vote.
We did.
I would vote if, I think we still need to discuss, so I guess nay, if that's going.
Same thing, nay.
Well.
I'd like to discuss it.
All right.
I just thought.
I just want some clarification on that.
Okay, yeah, all right.
I don't normally do that.
So, so the motion to call the vote has failed, which means the discussion continues. Do you understand how this works, Corey?
Yeah, you missed the, the, the second call, so.
Well, that's all right, but so we did it all over again.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that I thought that I heard it, but whatever.
Yeah.
But that's, I just want you to know you want to shut off. When somebody calls and votes, and you vote that.
Thanks for the question.
And a motion did not carry, so we continue discussion on the underlying motion. And the underlying motion is to have a discussion.
I have a very. Very simple question. So the main motion is to have a special town meeting to discuss the items that you've eliminated. My question is, within that, is there room for discussion on the feasibility study of the schools, or is that something separate?
We can put that in there, too.
Well, I, I think there's more of an immediate discussion for that. I mean, I think that's something we should talk about sooner rather than later, but, and not put it off.
So you're, so, so I'm sorry. So you're suggesting we do the feasibility study this go-around at annual company? Yeah, I'm just not sure where we get the word for that. I, I mean.
My thing on that is that the figures have changed. And so we, it was pretty unclear as to what they presented last week, and what this fellow's saying. So I'm a little puzzled by that. I really am.
And I don't, I, I don't disagree. And again, I don't know that our, our, our relevant advisory committees are going to love it. But the fact that they're going to now have to wait to start feasibility study till, you know, October or November, when their application is due in early December. So they're not going to have the benefit of any of that information before they go for their second round of MSBA fund.
This, they could still apply.
They can, well, to clarify. If they, if, well, and I've heard that they, and I think from, somebody from the school committee, that they could do it for 750. The figure that I, another figure that I've heard in talking to various people in the school committee.
I also heard the 1.5.
That was the original one.
I know, but I'm not finished. That was only for middle and high school. So let's tack on Oscar Deerhill. Let's, that could be another two. So I mean, they didn't come to us, I'll be honest with you. The bells were ringed too brightly that night. You know, they're just. The bells were ringed too brightly that night, you know, there's just, you know, one, one point five for a school feasibility study. I get it, and, but all three schools, that's, that was my, where my head was going with it. And, but it turns out it's only the high school, and it's only interior of the building itself, nothing around the surrounding area.
The special town meeting does not preclude this board. If they come before us for another funding to do something, as long as we can find the money in the budget. Do that, and we may find money in the budget if we feel that we need to do that. We might be able to find a couple hundred thousand dollars or just initiate a study and then finish it with, 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 with later on, if we so choose.
I think, I just, um, just for clarity purposes, and it may not be necessary, but I just think if we're gonna do a. Special town meeting in the fall to discuss major capital projects, we need to be open to. Other potential funding things that come our way, not necessarily that which is delineating.
Or other similar matters.
We may have other real estate options. Yeah, to include without limitation.
Yes. Yeah.
And, and Diane, on the feasibility study, one thing on timing, if I recall correctly, the MSBA voted to. Whether or not to accept schools into the program in December, and so if we.
Applications probably do soon.
No, no, I know the applications do, but if we were to move forward with the fees, if we ordered to appropriate funds, we even know at that point. Around that point, whether we interact with MSBA. And you're making me rethink, their application's probably gonna be in, in June this year.
I think it's due in April.
Okay, so it's in April, so this isn't gonna matter.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes, small thing.
I want a clarification on this. Do you want to amend your motion to include in other similar matters that we.
So, so, yes, so just to be clear, on, on the special town meeting, I'm only saying that. With respect to these four articles before us, let's include but not limit special town meeting. Um, to the infrastructure projects we've been discussing. So if there's other stuff, like, let's say zoning article or whatever, we can take that decision as a.
So Jean has amended her motion to add others, your words again, please.
Include but not limit.
Um, do we have a second? Then a motion made and seconded to have a second. September or the, the fall.
That's to add the other extra infrastructure just.
That motion made, thank you, we may have that made it seconded, is there further discussion?
I'm still got questions, this isn't how like this process works. So typically, we announce a town meeting date, and then we start the process, and we vote on everyone. We don't like, make a sense of the board vote to say, we're gonna do this and this and this, it's just not how this works, so. Again, we have a process for announcing a town meeting, creating audibles, voting to put them on, voting to recommend them. That's the process you're gonna have to go through regardless of what you vote here today. So my question to council stands, what exactly are we doing, and why are we doing that?
What, what I feel we need to do, including for our committees, including for the committees that are advocating and all the people doing work. We are signaling to them, we are either gonna try to ram these things through town hall, fields and court, roads and sidewalks, schools. Which takes a huge amount of time and everyone's effort for this annual town meeting. Or, we're gonna put them off until the fall and do all of this work that still needs to be done in the meantime. That's what this is meant to say.
Okay, so it's a signal, I mean, this is not, there's no mechanism, action here, it's just a signal, sense of the board, what you're intending to do. The board supports the idea.
And, and to help people plan their time and the committees plan their time, in, including, are they, you know, frantically waiting for. These uh, warrant articles that are gonna be huge and come down, because we still need capital and advisory to vote. Um, and we still need, you know, the school committee, school facility, like, there's a lot of work to be done if this is gonna happen in annual town meeting. Our town staff who's been working overtime on all of this, trying to frantically get it ready. I think it's, it's fair to give them, like. Really explicit direction about continuing the breakneck pace or. You know, take things at, you know, give guidance.
Okay, so, um, are there any other comments? Paul?
That's just, I said again, have we asked Tom about, can I ask you a question, Michelle? You work like a yeoman on the fields and courts, all right, among other things. Now, and I'm not saying it's any way of sarcastic, would it be easier to push and run it down to an October meeting? I mean, so why a shovel, I'm pretty much, but I mean, are, are, are we shovel ready on the fields and courts?
Unfortunately.
All right, that's, thank you.
Diane, do you have a comment? Is there any further comments? There are no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Say nay, sorry.
All those say, opposed, say nay.
I understand, we'll just go to the purpose.
I said aye.
I am sorry. All right, we, um, the motion carries three, one, one. Okay, moving on to the town manager's update.
I know, you, you have some articles, Commissioner Kears is very patiently waiting along with our finance director talking about the sewer budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's getting late.
Here's Tony Daniel Coach Road, Vice Chairman of the Sewer Commission. Good evening, first, I'd like to report that, um, things went really well with St. Patrick's Day weekend, a lot of corned beef and cabbage and.
And the green foam in the harbor, which where?
Good. The green foam in the harbor. We've, uh, put together a budget, our chairman, uh, had submitted, uh, earlier, um, to the finance director. And, uh, just some highlights for the budget, um, it's pretty much. The same, um, budget that we've had conservatively over the last couple of years. A lot of the line items have been recognized with a small increase of, uh, on average about maybe one or two percent. The major changes that, um, we made to the budget, um, were in legal services. Uh, we've increased it from ten thousand dollars to thirty thousand dollars. And our consulting engineering went from eighty to eighty-five thousand dollars, that's just kind of a. Cost adjustment to what's been actually, um, occurring. And the other main, uh, piece that we put into is some non-planned, uh, pumping expenses. That'd be between sixty and eighty thousand dollars, uh, we had a, a situation at the, at the sewer plant where we had a. A portion of our membranes, which is a filter system, uh, start to deteriorate rather rapidly. And, uh, so we had to put some containment issues in place. And put together a corrective action, uh, to ensure that, uh, we can limit the amount of, uh, exposure that we had to that. And I think by June, we should probably have a preventive action in place, uh, to where we can maintain that situation. In the meantime, we're, we're budgeting the sixty, eighty thousand dollars for additional, um, off-site pumping that we need to do. One piece of revenue that we did recognize for FY twenty-four is a hundred thousand dollars, and that is a, uh. A portion of, uh, the CJG, CJC, uh, contract, uh, that we have in place.
What's the, what's the timing of the, of the last of Harvard project? Or do they have their on Saturday?
So the, last of Harvard project, um. They're probably coming online, uh, suspecting some part in twenty twenty-four. We're, we're not, um, budgeting any revenues from that as of yet, uh, because we haven't been determined if it was going to be late into twenty twenty-four. Uh, but that's certainly something that we could adjust in our budget, uh, once we get in, if we go to the fall town meeting, we'll have a better understanding of where we are. There are, are several projects that are coming online that would, uh, increase. Sewer usage in the town, uh, which would also increase our sewer usage revenue that we, we bring in, so. Projects such as Cook Estates, um, has been put online, uh, so those revenues, uh, will be calculated and recognized. And also, CJC, um, his usage will start to begin. Out of the twenty units there, he's got ten occupied already, and the, uh, five affordable housings were the first ones, uh, to be occupied. So that's great use for affordable housing, and, um, so, uh, we'll be working with the finance director on. Aspects of calculating, uh, what we're gonna do versus those use charges, but there's also going to be, um, additional revenue coming in for. Primarily the, um, sewer connection piece, so those will be calculated and recognized. Once, uh, the contracts are signed in place.
Anything else?
I think that's it, Michelle, any questions of us?
Well, I, I read it very well done, I, nice to see that you're keeping the budget under control. Comments, comments on the board.
We're sorry, we didn't put you on earlier, Jen.
Yes, we have.
I did have one quick question on the increase from legal services, is that because of the sewer membrane issue that we're anticipating?
The question, the, what budget?
Increase in legal services.
Interest?
Uh, legal services.
Oh, legal services.
Looks like it went up to thirty thousand.
It went up to thirty thousand dollars, right, so. Yeah, so going from ten to thirty thousand dollars, basically the extra twenty thousand dollars in the services, um, is. Primarily there for, um, two reasons, one is primarily for, um, exercising what we believe is a, uh, warranty.
Yeah, that's right.
In the membranes, that we're gonna have to try and calculate, and any additional legal fees that we have in executed contracts. People like Cook Estates and CJC and.
That's right.
Are there any other comments?
Just, just a quick question on some of the kind of off book, um, requests in terms of capital budget, that you go. Are you before capital budget or any extraordinary capital expenses?
We have, we, um, the, we, we put together the five-year plan and ten-year plan with capital. Um, so that's pretty much been maintained with capital.
There's nothing in the current, there's nothing in twenty-four that.
Nothing in twenty-four, um, most of our capital expenses this year are. Paid out of our existing budget.
Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good.
I have to put, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, have they gone to advisory, is this ready for, um?
Well, you can vote the whole budget as a group.
Okay, all right, sure, yeah.
So the, last week, um, you added, the board added the, uh, what's now called art sixteen, the move across police from civil service. Just an alternative process, advisory body unanimously to recommend that last week, so it's teed up for you folks.
That's the.
That's the new article sixteen.
Okay, I have one thing on the forty-eight hour.
Can you just move, you want to just move?
Yeah, yeah, I have one other article.
Oh, yeah, let's move on.
They want to move.
Uh, yeah, I moved that we recommend, uh, article sixteen, removal of cross-pleased social service, second.
We have a motion, uh, made and seconded to, uh, remove, request of police from civil service. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, extensions, motion to change the address.
One other thing here, uh, today, I've set all, now with this, um, putting, and says comments. So, it turns out that there's a. Okay, it's been in there since the eighties, but we haven't done it really in a very long time. Requires the publication weekly in a local newspaper of all the building permits issued, uh, and. It hadn't been, you know, it, it, it's all available public information, but it hasn't been published in paper quite some time. Um, someone raised it in a zoning case recently, uh, that, that it hadn't been published. There, there's no validity, there, there's no, the, the town has no liability here, and, and it doesn't grant any special rights. That said, it's clearly something we're not doing, and if we try to do it now, it would be cost prohibitive, but the globe, picture larger, and no one reads them anymore. And on the print, right, I, I don't mean to be disrespectful to print media. So, John Howland and I spoke, I spoke to Carolyn, Carolyn Murray, I've sent you all the opinions, says, well, the town has no liability here, you really probably should take the bylaws. So you're not a conflict local operation, because it is publicly available on the website. So the recommendation here, and this was vetted through, we checked it formally today by John Howland, fully inspected. Would be to change published in a paper to published on the town's website. And also, uh, making it available during regular business hours to the building departments, we can post it up in the building department, they could come in. They don't have access to the town's website, it's already being done, but we're gonna now make it weekly, it had been done monthly. So every week they'll be, it'll be clearly available on town's website, so. I wouldn't put this in front of you at this last minute, except it became an issue today, talked to, Mr. Chairman, Grayton, and. I pulled this together, so, a, any questions about why we need to.
I, I have seen as we have a paper, it makes sense.
Yeah. I have a, a, addition to this, one of the issues that we're working on, there was no requirement for the building inspector to issue. A, uh, a decision.
I think that's been addressed, I, there was someone who raised that issue when it turned, was that, was that, was that a zoning question, I think?
There was a zoning, yeah, this, it, it.
This is, these were building permits, that's why, that's as other had as the zoning.
Yeah, but the, the gentleman who was from the assistant, uh, Vice Chair of ZBA, we discussed it.
Okay.
And I discussed it with the Chair of the ZBA, and it's been an ongoing discussion about making sure that if. If, uh, somebody applies, then they, they're entitled to get a decision, because otherwise. If not, nothing's done, you, you never know what you're doing, and the neighbors, if something is approved. We need a requirement, maybe we can deal with that later, but, uh, I thought this was going to be in here.
It's a, it's a whole different section of the code.
Okay, so we will.
Is that not statutory?
I don't want to go down that road tonight.
Yeah, there, there was an issue.
It's a good question, Diane, it, it, it was a zoning question, it was raised, it turned out it wasn't addressed, yeah. But I, I, Jeff is a, a different question, I just addressed it in a different place, so this, this is a problem, it, it, it's, it's. I know it's the last minute, but it's something that we really should fix, so that's why I have it.
I would make a motion to adopt the amendments.
We had a motion made and seconded to adopt the, uh, amendment for the building permits, A dash one.
Diane, several one weird question, so we don't have to go through any.
It's a general bylaw, so you don't have to go through the whole process, it's just advisory, you first, although we'll get zoning opinions.
Great, thank you.
All right, I just, I'm, I'm, so, two questions, sorry, um. If we're posting hearings for like liquor license or whatever, my, my main issue is, do we have to say the town's website, can we just say conspicuously? I'm just wondering if in ten years we don't have a website anymore, that we have to redo.
I, I, well, we, we also, we talked about just saying the tax should be caused to be published, the problem is we didn't define what that meant. And I was afraid of leaving it too vague and being, and, and worship. I don't think we're, I don't think we're not gonna have a website anytime soon, and if we do, we should just amend it, we should be paying attention to these things more. So I, I apologize, starting to get all this was a system.
Sure, fine, okay, sorry.
We have any other further discussion? And go further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, extension motion carries, and then I have my quick report.
If you don't have a website, doesn't matter anyway.
Like this posted. So, I think we're still on time, on target, so the goal is to have advisor wrap up as much as possible, tomorrow night, you get the final votes next week, that's the plan. Our drop dead deadline is April sixth, so the printer doesn't have a strike, um, so that's where we are, right?
That's next Thursday.
That's next Thursday, so if, if there's something that lingers, we can talk about something.
Has advisory, um, um, voted on the budget?
Yes, it's tomorrow.
That's tomorrow. That is our legal requirement.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's right, that's really right, and then they should do capital, we should, we should get that. By one of my reports, if you notice, the flags were half-staffed today, and that was a memory of Specialist Michael Ernst Jr., who grew up in the last, died in a training accident. Uh, he was buried today at our cemetery, uh, and that's the reason that the flag. And that's the reason that the flag was put back last. I really want to thank the Adventure Service Officer, Mahoney Fores, for getting the state to make that possible, because we can't, you know, I already wrote the flags, it has to be a order of the governor, the president. And he was able to work with memorials to get that, what, that it worked out. So in fact, I saw someone take a picture of it. And it turned out her son had gone to school with them, they were best friends at high school. And he was actually at the funeral in our. So she took a picture of the flag here as I was walking, so. It's, it's, it's a sad, sad moment. At the same time, it was a really nice honor to be able to do that.
Okay, I'm going to move a forty-eight hour to now, because I've really want anybody who's still watching at home to hear this. As we know, there's another tragic school shooting. And there's been a lot of concerns around town, and I just want the town to know and the board to know that there are a lot of things that are being done by our police department, which we're not at liberty to discuss, but it has not been ignored. And in addition, we are going to have a a executive session to discuss this. I know the school committee is also having an executive session on Wednesday. Whether or not we want to have a joint executive session, we might want to discuss if Wednesday works for, for for the board. But I think it's important to know that there, there is expanded police presence and patrols in places that probably we don't want to disclose, but there are. The town has not ignored this situation. It's a tragic situation. And our police department is preemptively working with this. Now, we have an appetite for an executive session, joint executive session with the school committee on security issues, if they wish. And I know they're meeting Wednesday. Anybody have thoughts on?
I'm not a security expert, so I don't think I can bring anything. If they need something from us, like funding, absolutely, but I'm not. I trust our police and the school committees and schools, and the school administration could do as well.
Yeah, I think we should meet with them. I think we should support our schools. I think it's a key effort. I don't think it's just a school effort or a police effort. So I think that we should continue to remain open to how we can help.
All, Diane, Diane?
Yeah, my time is very challenged, but.
Okay, so. Or, yeah, tomorrow, and I don't have the time. It would be nice. I just wanted to pursue this, and we will. Yeah.
Are they looking for us to be there?
No. They are having their own. We haven't talked to them.
They're not.
They're not asking. But if we want to, I think we probably should privately discuss this as a board. Okay. Select board comments? Corey, do you have any horsepower?
Of course I do. No, I, I, I believe in everything I talk about. You know, so it's funny, I was watching a great movie, The Martian, right? And in, in that movie, in order to try to save Mark Watney, they build a probe, and they try to send it up to space to give him some, stuck on those. Try to get in food quickly. And what they do in order to do that is they skip a bunch of safety checks. And what happens is the thing launches and explodes. And this is my analogy, say, process always wins. If we try to avoid, you know, proper process, we will lose the town rules. And I know it's annoying for people to hear, and maybe it's an open, a broken record. But processes are there for the reason it gets us where we want to go. To that point, you know, the second thing is, I know that this board may, you know, I've made a brush to put town hall building committee on the mark, because I think the process led us there. This board disagreed. And I'm publicly going to say, I'll buy anybody a coffee, or call this board's bluff a little bit. If this actually shows up on special town meeting in the fall, anyone, if you're in town, common happens, seat me out and buy a coffee. Because I, I doubt that this project, I think this project has been killed tonight. I think it's sad, because I think it's a failure process. And I think the other thing is, if you don't follow the process, they're going to die. And I think that's sad, that we've chosen to ignore those things rather than embrace those things.
Thank you, Corey. Diane?
Two things I just want to thank, who has a fire department, the chief doctor, in particular, for responding to the house fires in, in Minnetonka, which were pretty significant. I did agree mine, that Chief Doctor would have been one of the first on scene in terms of immediately, so thank them, because that's always scary and pretty impressive in terms of the challenging fire. And then also in the news lately is that we loan our ambulance to hang them. I don't know if anybody has seen that, that news, and I'm just curious, I didn't know about that, so.
I had to move my car when they.
I'm sorry?
I had to move my car so they could move it.
The backup, right?
We all loan equipment back and forth to each other as needed. I think they're in the shop, and they just needed a backup, so we shared, if we need them, so.
There was a story about the parts not coming through from the manufacturer, the influence, but it was kind of interesting. So. And then just congratulations to all the people that work really hard on the health and rec fair this weekend, so that's it.
Well, I do say, to look forward, but I am disappointed that we will be doing these projects over the special time meeting. I'm extremely disappointed. I think we could have done better. But that being said, I'm hoping that this town is going to think, oh, boy, another town meeting, we're kicking it down the road again. Because that's the impression. We always keep moving things down the road. My impression, insurance, you know, for coming on boards or like that, bump it down the road. So I wanted to ask in that regard is that we communicate this via social media as to where's, why's, how's? And the reasons we're doing these things. I don't know how to get them out there, because it's just a failure, but you know, it is. It's a sad, sad affair, doing a meeting a week. And I care about you guys, but not that much. And you should care probably.
We'd rather be eating elsewhere.
Exactly. So, but I am disappointed. I think we could have done some things done. I understand the logic behind it. But I think the town should know. That's all I want to say about that, is we've got to get it out there. So are there any way of doing that, Chris? Do we follow? Why would we, I mean, I could write something.
I, 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 I think that kind of statement for the board is best directed by the board, you know, unless you want me to draft something.
Would I be able to put together something on pressing the board as to why?
It would have to be socialized through us, so we can draft something, and then maybe we talk about it next week, but. You know, I think.
I just think we should communicate what we're doing to the town. Again, so it's something personal. There's nothing to kick down the road. That's all. That's what I'm getting at.
Jane?
Um, yeah, I think Paul's idea is a great one, and I think it's part of the communication, because it's not just communication among us and the people, the small set of people that we always talk to and bounce ideas back and forth. It's really trying to get the community more socialized. If we're going to increase people's taxes by approximately ten percent, I want to make sure that people know that they're not hit off guard, that they have an opportunity to really fully understand what's coming their way and make those informed decisions. I, in, in my line of work, one of the things I do is consumer advocacy. And I want to make sure that people can make full and informed decisions. And also I'm mindful that the economy right now, I think, is you know, there's stuff going on that's out there that's going to become hard for people, including for people to stay in their homes as economic and financial distress may pick up in the future, which we're already seeing signs of. And so before I raise someone's taxes and vote for that, including up to ten percent raises, I want to make sure that we've really done our job to communicate that to the townspeople, even though I would love to see these projects get done yesterday. So I completely agree with everyone's sentiments, but I also feel very strongly about full and informed disclosure and communication, and making sure people have the information they need.
Yeah, thank you, Jane. Um, I would add to that, this is a very difficult situation. And it is a significant amount of money, and we are dealing with things that were kicked down, the cans that were kicked down the road many years earlier. Finally, they can't be ignored. However, because there's, can't be ignored doesn't mean you move forward without proper decision-making, proper information to the public. It's not fair to go a sweetheart project here and forget, forget about all the other ones. We want to put them in a totalitarian, so it's fair to everybody in town, and also to make sure that everybody in town has the opportunity to know the information. And we have put a lot of information out. It's a lot for people to understand. And I think the best thing that we have done is we've said, we need a forum that is focused just on this. We started with the long-term financial planning in the spring. And we built on that, and things became obvious. And our boards and committees have worked very hard to review all of these. It's impossible to do proper justice to everyone. I was very tempted to kind of say, well, we could do this you know, today, and this today. But we really come back to you have to be fair to everybody, and you can't be fair to everybody unless everybody's at the table. So I think we, I think we've done well, and it is true, we have given up our summer vacations to be on this board. So anyway, with that being said, we have a couple of minutes to approve.
I remember that we put the minutes in February twenty eighth and March sixteen.
Second.
I would just make, ask Tracy to review the tapes on one particular vote where I've made a motion and seconded, which I think actually Paul seconded it on the national grid vote, so I just wanted to. That's amended.
But Diane, you're very good. All right, we had a motion made, seconded. All those in favor who approve the minutes of two twenty-eight and three sixteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Chair would have a motion to adjourn.
So second.
A motion to adjourn made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.